You all please stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you're going to remain standing, we have our invocation this evening by Bob Barnett, our police chaplain. Welcome.
Thank you. Lord, would we begin this session by inviting your presence to fill this place? We pray that it would be obvious through the discussions and the wisdom displayed. Your word says, Lord, that if we ever lack wisdom, we can ask you and you'll give it generously. So tonight, we always ask for wisdom. We pray that you would make our city a city that always smiles at the future. We're grateful for those that serve our community. We ask a blessing upon them, and we're grateful for those to be recognized by our city as well. Blessed this evening, in the name of the Lord. Amen.
You may be seated. If we can have our County Fire Authority Division Chief, James Henry, if you could please come forward. Let me allow our Mayor Pro Tem, who serves on the Orange County Fire Authority, to make the following presentation, and I'll be up here to support.
Thank you, Mr. American. Evening, everyone. They say that when you love what you do, you don't look at pay. And our newest division chief, Jim Henry, started his career in 1984 as a reserve, non-paid firefighter here in the city of Santa Ana. He has a long history of working in the city of Santa Ana. He loves Santa Ana. When I first met the chief, a while back, he was a battalion chief, and you could just tell of how much he loves this city, how much he loves the fire department. Ten years ago, was it, that went to OCFA? Is that correct? Seven years ago, went to OCFA, and we are now part of that family. But his heart is still here, and he remained working here. And from what I'm told, you had to, when you were transferred recently, you had to promote to come back to Santa Ana. And that's tough, to go out there and earn a promotion so you can come back to the city of Santa Ana. They say when you love something enough, it loves you back. Chief Henry, Santa Ana loves you. Welcome back, sir. And our newest division chief, Chief Jim Henry. Chief, if you could say a few words, a little bit about yourself. When you started the fire, tell us a little bit about yourself, sir.
Well, I won't bore you with all of that, but let's just say I've been doing it a long time and still enjoy what I do. And it's an honor and a pleasure to be back in the city and the community where I want to be. Just a very proud moment for myself and a humbling moment as well to be back here to support the community and support the elected officials and to support all those guys standing in the back as well. So, thank you, and I look forward to continuing to work with all of you. Thank you.
Chief, it is my pleasure and honor to present you this executive management pin. It's got the city seal on it. I'm sure you'll wear it with pride, and I'm very, very happy to give it to you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, why don't you come down? Why don't you come on down? City, come on. Jose, you're here. Hold on, we're going to get the city council. Why don't you move over this way a little more? We're going to get the council members. Keep the chief in the center.
All these guys are a lot taller than us.
Yeah.
We didn't meet the height requirement.
One more.
Very special person.
Joseph Hawa, are you here? Come on around. I'm going to allow Mr. Joseph Hawa to say a few words here in a moment. But first, let me tell you why he's here and a little bit about who he is. He's a famous artist, and he does work here in Santa Ana, and we're blessed and honored to have him. He began many years ago at the American Academy of Art in Chicago. And he took additional courses at Northwestern University, also in Chicago. And that landed him a job in graphic design and illustrating position with Sears Roebuck. And that was his first job out of art school. In 1975, Mr. Hawa knew that art was his calling, and he took a leap of faith and just went full-time to becoming an artist. And now he's a well-known artist here in Santa Ana. He's a master of many styles, different genres, also different mediums. He's been a positive force in the community within Santa Ana, both as an artist and as someone who's taken great pride here in our beautiful city. Today, which is his birthday, we're going to thank Joseph Hawa for his contribution to the community and for bestowing his artistic talents and abilities among those who live within it. So with that, Mr. Joseph Hawa, I want you to say a few words, if you like.
I want to thank you for introducing me to the people around here in the city of Santa Ana. In the meantime, I'm very happy to donate my oil painting to the city. This is an old painting that represents the first street in California to be paved and asphalted in the whole state of California. That's why I brought this painting to the city of Santa Ana to have it as the memory of my work.
Is it below where they can see your face? We don't want it to cover you. I understand that street is Los Rios?
Los Rios Drive.
Los Rios Drive in San Juan Capistrano. I'm sure we had dirt streets here in Santa Ana in those years, because, you know, San Juan or some of the oldest cities around. But, and I noticed you painted that in 1997, and you've been painting a long time.
Yeah, but when I was doing it, a head of that town told me, "Do you know what you are doing?" I said, "I'm painting a street." He said, "No, this is not a regular street. This is the first street in California to be paved and asphalted in the state of California." So, I'm very happy to do that because it's something to remember for everybody. But this is the first street to be paved and asphalted in California. Thank you very much.
Joseph Hawa, let me give you this token of appreciation from the city of Santa Ana to you, and this is in recognition of your outstanding contributions to the community. And we'll hang that, your painting, here in City Hall, and we're very appreciative for the work that you've done. Thank you very much. He wants to thank everybody for coming here to help us celebrate here today. Thank you. Happy birthday. Madam City Attorney, is there anything to report out of closed session, please?
Mayor, we have two reportable items. The first is the first item, City of Santa Ana versus Robert Marlin, the trustee. The city council unanimously approved a settlement for the purchase of the property in relation to the Bristol Street widening. Councilmember Sarmiento was absent. In the second matter, the city council approved a settlement of $250,000. The vote was positive with Councilmember Sarmiento and Mayor Polito absent.
All right, I'm now going to turn our attention to the consent calendar. Are there any items that council members wish to pull from the consent calendar? Councilmember Martinez?
I know, right?
No, I knew her, C.D. Iglesias. It's a little joke.
Because she questioned everything, so that's good.
Keep going.
Okay, 11A, 19C, 19E, 19F, 22A, and 25D.
B or D?
D.
Okay, she pulled 11A, 19C, 19E, 19F, 21A, and 21B, as in David.
No, 22A.
And 22A?
Yeah, not 21.
Sorry. 22A. All right, so with that, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I think I did hear 19E is one of them.
19E, yes. So with that, I would entertain a motion on the balance of the consent calendar. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. So now, 11A. Councilmember Iglesias.
For 11A, I just wanted it to be separate because at the prior council meeting, I voted against it. So I just want it to be pulled so we can vote separately, so that's pretty much it.
Move the item.
So we have a motion?
Second?
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Item 19C.
Okay, this one, I just need a... You can't hear me. For this one, I just need a clarification from... This is where, you know, we're doing destruction of obsolete city records just to make sure that the police records are not included in this item.
I understand that's the case. Is that the case, City Manager?
The records that we're deleting, what records are they?
Those are both records from Financial and Management Services Department, which is Catherine's department, and then Parks and Rec Department.
Okay, but the police records are not included in this?
Separate.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Can I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. 19E.
And I know this is just a receive and file, but I do have some questions. So I don't know who is going to be the person that's going to come up here. Who's going to be the person that's going to come up here to answer some questions regarding?
Our homeless services manager, Hafsa Kaka, is available to answer any questions on the report.
Okay, thank you. So what exactly is this report, Hafsa?
Good evening, councilmembers. So last year, we began starting to have the homeless services quarterly report to provide basic macro-level updates to the council on all of our efforts concerning homelessness.
So what's included in here? The type of, I guess, shelters that we have? How many shelters, how many beds? What are we looking at?
Not necessarily. They're quarterly reports, so they discuss the major initiatives that have happened during that quarterly period. Our shelters, the basic fact sheet has that, and that's on our website. But as you can see, we talk about three major components. Law enforcement relative to homelessness, affordable housing, and then other services initiatives. So you could see the eight highlighted projects that we had. One of the biggest projects we had during this last quarter, which, well, this quarter, which is October 2018 to December 2018, was establishment of the LINK, the interim shelter. So that was a big, major update.
So how many shelters do we have in the city?
So in the city of Santa Ana, as you can see, this is the homeless fact sheet that we have on our website. And in that, we have the Courtyard, which is not operated by the city. It's operated by the county. We have the LINK, which is our 200-bed shelter.
How many do we have? How many beds do we have in each?
It's, well, it's 450 Courtyard, 200 LINK. Hospitality House is 50 beds, which is Salvation Army. And then, of course, Safe Place and Wise Place, which is 60 beds. And on a seasonal basis, we have the two... Well, not we, but the county operates the 200-bed shelter in the Armory.
So how many do we have now?
So if you total that, that's probably, let's see, 450, 250, over 600, 700?
700 beds?
Over 7, yeah.
Available year-round?
Not year-round. This includes the 200-bed Armory Shelter.
Okay. So without that, it would be about 500 beds that we have year-round?
Yeah.
Okay, so then you said 450 at the, at the?
Well, with the inclusion of our new 200-bed shelter. So that would be the 450 plus the 50 plus our 200-bed LINK, and then the 200, that's seasonal, Armory.
Okay. So the LINK is, I guess, the capacity is 200?
Yes.
Beds? And pretty much we're hitting that mark, aren't we?
Yes.
Okay, so then, and then we have 450 at the Courtyard. So then that's about 650. And then you said we have 50 somewhere else, at Salvation Army?
Yeah.
So we have about 700 already here in Santa Ana that the city's already providing for. And that's all in here in this report? Okay. The reason I'm asking is because, you know, there's a very contentious shelter that's being opened on Yale Street on the west end of Santa Ana. And it's something that we're very... And it's supposed to be a 600-bed shelter. So for us, it's a concern on that end, you know, just for the city itself. And it seems like we're just attracting more and more and more. So I know that's going to be a conversation. The supervisor has agreed that he's going to be coming at our meeting, our second meeting in April, to make a presentation. So hopefully, we were able to address that because there's a lot of concern that, you know, it's said that we don't have enough shelter, I mean beds, but we do have enough. I mean, just by hearing what you're saying, it's, we already have almost 700 beds in the shelter. So I just wanted just for you to just, you know, be, I guess, aware of what's coming up. There's going to be a lot of concerns shared by the residents, and that's something that is, right now, is just barely the talk of the conversation on what's happening with that shelter. So thank you for this information, but this gives our community a little bit more information on where we're at when it comes to providing shelter. But that's something that's going to be forthcoming. I know there's going to be a lot of questions coming to you. You know, personally, I know, because you're the director for that. But thank you so much, Hafsa, for this information. And I guess with that, I just wanted just to let you know that there's concerns that we are already doing more than our fair share.
Thank you, and we're working hard to ensure that we're safeguarding the city. And then I also wanted to just quickly let you guys know that the LINK shelter that we have, we have been, since inception, housed 26 individuals and families into permanent housing in less than 100 days with our partnership with Mercy House, and that's a huge success. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman Salorio.
Thank you, yeah. I had also wanted to pull this item up, maybe a few points, but we got one question here as well. First, I do want to thank code enforcement staff, city attorney staff, and PD. I think it was about a month ago, I led an item alongside Councilmember Benandosa and Iglesias regarding more enforcement on the railroad properties because they come out every now and then to help clean up, but clearly not often enough. And a lot of our problem starts are in at the railroad, so kudos to the staff. I know they gave the council an update on how they now have given notice to these railroad companies, even including their out-of-state headquarters. They posted notices on the railroads. And so we really are beginning, really what's going to be a good compliance and legal process to have them clean up and do so on a regular basis, or we'll do it for them and just bill them. Because it needs to be done, but should not be done at our expense. So thank you for staff there. With respect to that new facility on Yale Street, I know there has been discussions about inviting the county to come to a council meeting to talk about that facility. Is there a date set yet, and do we know who the presenter is? I know we've been hearing information, but I just wanted to confirm it.
I think it is the next council meeting that they are expected, and I'm not sure of the person representing it. I will get back to the council.
Okay. Does maybe our homeless coordinator know who's coming from the county?
We're expecting someone from the county.
We don't know? Either we know or we don't.
We don't know yet.
We don't know who's accepted the invitation.
The councilman thought it was Supervisor Andrew Dell. Maybe he's communicated with us or not, or declined? I mean, I'd like to know, just because we've mentioned for two weeks, two or three weeks, that he's coming. And I'm fine if it's somebody else, but we have the audience here. We ought to just have some clarity about this.
I will get back to the council on the confirmation of who and when they're attending.
So right now, we don't know?
Correct. I don't have the information with me right now.
Okay, well, maybe you could let us know tomorrow so we can let the public know. Also, with respect to that same facility, I think it was last year when working with the court and surrounding cities, we began to put together what that plan and shared responsibilities might be there, number of beds, who's going to pay, timing, et cetera. It'd be good if staff can give us an update on what outstanding actions remain that the city needs to think about or do. Because I'll be honest with you, there's some folks in town that are having second thoughts about a facility that big. Or, for example, and I already raised it to the county, right now, we have 400 beds at the Courtyard. The city doesn't pay a dime for any of that. When we go to the county, they want to do the same 400, and then they want to dedicate another 125 for the city, but charges for those beds. Well, you know, do any of the cities, other cities, get charged for putting folks in there? I don't think so. So I don't know that that is something that we permanently want in there. And there may be other items, particularly since we have new council members. They may or may not be privy to that, and I like them to. And if there are action items that we need to do, that impacts the reality, the timing, cost, et cetera, with that facility. And we need to have that conversation as a council and then with others. I know in this report that you also mentioned that the staff did, that we made the request to the county some months ago to please not reopen the Armory. And they did anyway, including without letting us know. But they did reopen it, and I recently checked with some of the school leaders and the nonprofit about impacts. There's still a lot of impacts. They've had a higher security, deal with a number of issues. They got children both at a pre-K program there and the Dell High Center and an elementary school and intermediate school nearby. So we need to, I think, as a council and staff, be a little bit more aggressive about saying we don't want them to reopen it. I've mentioned too also, we have multiple staff members that serve on boards with the county to address homeless. And why should we be on those boards if they don't listen to us? And then we're the ones paying for all the impacts, so that's very inappropriate. So let's begin to highlight that again so that they don't just surprise us after the fact last year. And then finally, the quality of life team, that we have a crew that goes out Monday through Thursday to look at encampments, talk to folks, office services. But we really need to have that work effort be times three or times four. And with Measure X that highlighted itself as a homeless, this measure, although I didn't support it, I do feel that we need to do right by the voters and dedicate a lot of resources there. So I hope that you could work with our city manager's office and the budget office. And we're discussing a budget workshop as well at the end of this meeting. I really want us to put a priority on expanding the quality of life team for the benefit of the community. Thank you.
All right, so what action do we take on? Any action on this item?
Just move it because it's a...
Receive and file. All right.
I'll move it.
Second.
Any opposition? Motion carries, next.
For 22, 19F.
19F, before we take action, I have one speaker. Please come forward, Adele.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just wanted to say, yahoo, Santa Ana. You guys exceeded the regional housing needs allocation by a tremendous amount. I think it's great that we're doing this. The affordable housing number was 743 more than what we were targeting. I think it's a great job. And I think some of the other cities that have come down here to this council and expressed the fact that we aren't doing enough ought to take a look at this report. And it shows that Santa Ana is doing a remarkable job in addressing the affordable housing issue. So kudos to you guys. Thanks.
Okay, any other comments? Please go ahead. Councilmember Iglesias?
So Dale stole my thunder. What I wanted to say was that, you know, what this shows is that the city of Santa Ana is doing its job to ensure that we do have the affordable housing component. So I just wanted to just double-check with staff. How many units do we already have approved for affordable housing?
So the number of units in terms of affordable is 857 unit total. Were required by the previous unit to have 114. So as mentioned, we are, we have produced approximately 743 units in excess of what's had been required of the city.
And that's for a seven-year period, or?
Correct.
Okay, so then what happens, say, in this next seven years? Are we going to be held responsible for 114 units? I mean, how does the?
So the allocation process is through the state and through SCAG. And our staff is working with SCAG to go through the process of determining what is the allocation for the city of Santa Ana based on the next planning cycle. We think it's going to be seven more years. It could be five, but we're going to be working with the state and SCAG on the next year's, next planning cycle's allocation.
Yeah, okay. So then, our access doesn't carry over?
Unfortunately, currently it doesn't, but that's something that we have talked internally to. We can start lobbying. But, so when would you start having those conversations with lobbyists and SCAG?
We're already beginning to get contact by staff to be part of the RINA allocation process, and during that cycle, during that process, we will start to voice some of our areas of our excess and to see if we can get credit for that.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to add, parallel to this discussion of what cities are doing, the state of California under particularly Governor Newsom, he's revisiting all the RINA numbers, and he's going to give every city a new RINA number. So every city, I suspect, including ours, is going to be asked to do considerably more. I think statewide, his goal is for the next five years or something, literally like 3.5 million new units. And so while we're doing good, you know, based off, you know, this new goal and RINA effort, that number is going to change. Fortunately, at least, this go-around resources to go with it, both for planning as well as construction and other items, and maybe, we may want to, you know, ask our lobbyists to help get some of that planning money, so that we can do a better job of documenting the work that we've done and, you know, and making the case for them to be reasonable and the next step forward for us. But these numbers are going to change and go upward for every city.
They will.
Thank you. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, so any other questions? So a motion?
I'll move it.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Those in favor, please say aye. Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Next item?
Okay, this is 22A, right? So for this, what we're doing is, for this one, we're, you're asking us to increase the amount, right, to, let me see, by 460,000, making the amount not to exceed 983. My understanding, this was a bid, right? So they won the bid, two years ago?
Yes, that's correct. Orange County striping was the low bid, and the, it was based on amounts that we believed would complete striping in quadrant number two, which is the northeast part of the city. We have excellent unit pricing, we have available funding that we can, that we can transfer to use this construction contract, and we would be able to complete the remaining three quadrants in the city. So that's great news in using the excellent unit pricing.
But my question is, if, when this was a bid, what was the specification of the RFP? What was it that they were going to give us for the amount that we approved it when we did two years ago?
So that was primarily to do quadrant two in the city, which is north of First Street and east of Flower, to do the entire city, and also to do sign maintenance and other miscellaneous items that are not necessarily striping lanes in the roadway. So it was more than just doing quadrant two, it was to do also some sign maintenance and some curb markings citywide. But now, with the excellent pricing and the additional funding, we can move on to quadrant, which is the southwest corner of the city, south of First and west of Flower Street, and then we would move on to quadrant four, and then go back up to quadrant one.
But why wouldn't we go back for a bid?
We could, we could, but we would like to get the work completed before June. We have an available contractor, we have excellent pricing, and, you know, we'd like to proceed. We'd like to do the entire city in a one-and-a-half-year cycle, and by doing this, we could accomplish that.
But what was the initial contract that we gave them? It was 400 and-
It was five, it was $523,000 annually, so that was going to be an annual contract, several multi-year annual contract for 523,000. However, at that level, we could not complete the entire city in a two-year, one-and-a-half year cycle that we desire. So again, by adding the additional 460,000 to the remaining year's contract by June 30th, we can complete the city.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so given that, do we have a motion?
General approve.
There a second?
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye. Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Will we have one no? Next item that was pulled was 25 Ds and David, I believe.
Correct.
And if I may, with concurrence of the city staff and Madam Clerk, if you could make sure we do this correctly, I want to take this item, and I want to continue it until the 22nd of March at 5:00 PM. And in order to do so, I want to continue this council meeting, time certain, date certain, to that time. Is that, everybody following me? Okay? So is there a motion to that effect, or a second?
Motion to approve that.
Motion, I'll be happy to second. Councilor Solario?
Yeah, just one comment. Thanks for doing that, Mr. Mayor. I did speak with Councilmember Ben Sarmiento, and he had a very unfortunate death in the family, and-
He'll be able to join it.
This is an important decision, and he wanted to try to be there, and I think he-
And this will afford him now.
So thank you.
So with that, we have motion in a second. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Next item, I believe I have, we already kind of voted on this, Dale, but why don't you come on up? 32B, you want to speak on that as well?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers, once again. Just wanted to point out that this is an example of how a project can be approved, and then development agreements agreed upon, and then they can be changed multiple times. A couple of things that I noticed in the staff report, and that was, this project was originally approved back in 2012, not 2017. And exactly seven years ago, you guys approved an amendment to this, and it revised the project. And one of the project's stipulations were it would create an area equal to 0.8 acres of land instead of the 0.6 that was originally there. Again, in May of 2015, another amendment was processed through the city council, and again, it stipulated that it keeps the 0.8 acres as originally designated in the 2012 city council meeting. This map request changes that stipulation that you guys voted on in 2015. It creates a map parcel of 2.18 acres instead of 2.3, and it creates a parcel of 0.92 instead of 0.8. So I don't know how it is that it morphed into this approval to change the boundaries on what you guys voted on back in 2015. And, but the main point I wanted to make was, not only is that incorrect, and it shouldn't be approved, but development agreements change over time, and this is a clear example of how they do change. Three times, it came before the council to change. Nothing has been built yet, and who knows whether it will change again. Thank you.
Okay, I know we already voted on this item, but Mayor Protem has a question or comment. Please go ahead.
Yeah, I think this one slipped by me. Actually, I was a no item on, a no on 32A. So he can, 32A. We need to retake the vote, or?
I'll bring it back up for reconsideration.
And the reason is because there's a, there's a big problem with parking in this area, Artigia Pilar is in my ward, and I was, I would feel better if it was a less, instead of six, it would be four or three lots, but, anyway, that's my reasoning on that.
Can we, look, Madam Clerk, I think we can bring it back for reconsideration.
So the councilmember who motioned it was Jose Solario, he can reconsider, if he agrees to reconsider the item?
Because that was part of the global-
Right.
-consent calendar.
Right.
Actually, anyone who voted in favor of the matter may make a motion to reconsider.
Which is yourself, as well.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to reconsider. Want to do a revote, or you want to?
Well, first, let's bring it back. So with that, I'll second your motion. You want to hear it again, so now we're reconsidering it.
Vote, take a vote on that motion.
Is there, those in favor of reconsidering it?
I'll say aye.
Aye?
Aye.
So we got three ayes and o, and some, and a guy, and Jose thinking. All right, all right, so we're reconsidering, so we can talk about it again and revote or change it or whatever. You could continue it, you could seek amendments.
Well, I only wanted to make a comment. I know it went through the Planning Commission, but this is six lots here, they're dividing in, dividing this lot into, and, you know, we have a big enough parking issue in that neighborhood, like many of us suffer in this city, and I just think this, this is going to contribute to it. And so I'm not in favor of that many lots, I would be in favor of lesser, so I'm going to be a, I'm going to be a no on this item. And is there any other comments from my colleagues?
Well, you could also continue it, you could also seek to bring it back with a different recommendation from staff, if there's something you would be supportive of. I mean, Councilmember Iglesias?
I'm open to hear what my colleagues have to say about it.
Tell me what the process is at this time, but I would be comfortable with reconsidering it, taking it back, and, you know, bringing it to us once we have more information on this, on this item.
So this map is a request to consolidate two lots in a single-family residential area, and we subdivide that lot into six single-family lots and a private drive. Based on the review of the project, it actually complies with all of the code requirements, including the city's parking requirements for that size of units. The unit's about 2,700 square feet, each requiring a two-car garage and two open parking spaces, which each one has. It has a two-car garage plus two parking spaces in the driveway, so it complies with the subdivision standard as well as the design standard for the proposed development. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of the project. Of course, this is something that needs to come also before the city council under consent, and you do have the ability to provide direction to staff if you see that additional direction is needed. I just want to let you know that the Planning Commission did recommend approval, and the project did not require any type of variances or deviation from city design standards, including parking.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, along those lines, I have a question, probably to our city attorney. What I'm hearing staff say is this is really more of a ministerial action that we're being asked to take. Really, the action is just to approve the tentative tract map. Everything else, it sounds like, you know, by right, they can do that. So I do worry that if we don't approve this, we have some, some legal issues. Maybe City Attorney Carboyo, can you speak to that?
So, Mayor and Councilmembers, I think this is one of those instances where our, where our provisions are a little bit outdated, and a normal proceeding, city councils really probably wouldn't take a look at a tentative map. It happens at the Planning Commission level. It is an oddity of our system that we bring these things to, and we say, here they are, but you really can't do anything about them. I know that planning staff has taken a look at these types of provisions and want to come up, come with some cleanup. So, in short, you are, you are correct. It appears that this action was previously approved, there might be some reliance upon it. But having said that, if there are some issues that you want staff to address-
Address, correct.
-they can go back now and begin to work on those issues.
But related to the tract map-
But the approval may be there.
Related to the tract map, if it's something else, maybe we need to bring back a different item.
And, that's right, and this is tentative approval, so I don't know if there's any conditions of approval that you've imposed, that you might, that are going to address the councilmember's concerns or not?
What I, what I would like to know is what are some of the specific concerns that we can help address it? If it's related to parking, it complies with code standards, so if there were some directions for us to work on a different, you know, configuration, we can assist.
Well, you and I met the other day, we spoke about this, and I understand that we're legally, they're compliant. I'm just not supportive because there's so many, you know, vehicles. I mean, one thing is what it says, and another thing is common sense, and reality is that there's a lot of parking issues there. So, you know, I'm going to be a no vote on this, but I understand that-
Understood.
-legally, they're within the law, so I know to separate, but I just wanted to be a no vote on this, so.
I suggest we let him be a no vote, and the rest of the council just move forward, if possible.
I'll vote no with councilmember.
All right, then it doesn't pass. Then you're blocking the project.
Do you have to make a motion first, right?
Yeah, but, but, look, right now, we brought it back for reconsideration, and there's not four votes in the affirmative.
Well, let's just continue this later into the meeting, and if it rolls into the Friday, rolls into the Friday, and maybe-
Or just bring it back to the next-
Maybe we'll get another councilmember in the future, and then they can vote.
Let, I say continue it 30 days or something like that would probably be better.
Was there any direction for us to work on any specific issue?
I don't think there's any you can do. I mean, they're meeting today.
What I see, is there two, two stories, right?
These are two stories, correct.
And the walls behind the, on the border, that you can still see over, are they close enough, they can see, or is it? I just have a lot of problems with this, this is just too many. You know, I'm afraid that they build their homes, and you get a lot of people in there, it's going to be a million cars, it's just going to add to the problem we already have.
I understand your concerns.
So, look, I'll make a motion at table for 30 days, and if we have another councilmember here, then maybe you can have four votes then.
All right, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed?
No.
So that motion fails.
Well, that-
So we can't vote on it, we can't continue it.
Maybe we consider it later on Friday. I do worry too, just that legally, there's issues for us to raise a lot of issues here without giving the applicant an opportunity to be here, so-
Are you good with a two-week continuance to give them a little bit of time?
There's nothing we can do, it sounds like just one or two of you want to vote no.
Mr. Mayor?
You're a councilmember short, you might have a different vote.
Right, right.
Yes, City Manager?
I'd like to pull this item, give men a chance to explain some of the legal with our attorney, and all three of these tentative items.
That sounds good, and then staff could bring it back when ready.
Okay, so I withdraw the motion.
All right.
Yeah.
All right, now we're on to item 50A then. There's an ordinance of first reading amended in the San Municipal Code regarding loud and raucous noise.
I'd like to speak on it.
Just speak softly, go ahead.
Okay, I want to make a motion to approve, and I want, with comments, sir.
Go ahead.
Just want to thank all the staff that worked on this, this is item 50A, is that correct?
Yeah.
The loud noise, the, everyone on the Public Safety Committee, including our city attorney, Bogosian, and the chief, and all the city staff, and in particular also Esther Fonseca, who is a member of the Artigia Pilar Neighborhood Association, who was very instrumental in helping us bring this ordinance. If I can have the chief, or let's say Deputy Chief Gominski come up and speak a little bit about the ordinance? How this differs from the previous ordinance that we had?
Yes, sir, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. The Police Department has, for some time, struggled with the enforcement of 10-153, the Loud and Racist Noise Ordinance. Our issues generally go to responding to the same address over and over. We have issues in finding out who's in charge of the party, and then trying to hold people accountable for disturbing their neighbors. Based on input from numerous different sources, as well as the community, we reevaluated what the municipal code could be, and we have identified some new verbiage. Most importantly is the concept that an owner of property is responsible for what goes on, on that property, much like we look at when we take code enforcement issues. For a property owner to allow loud and raucous noise to occur over and over again, this law will now allow us to take administrative enforcement action against that property owner. We identified within this ordinance what a property owner is, and talked about specifically the authority to impose, like I said, administrative fines. Should an individual have a party, I'm sorry, a loud and raucous- Should an individual have a party, I'm sorry, a loud and raucous event on their property, the first response is no fine, the second subsequent response is $100, the third is $250, the fourth is $500, the fifth is $750, and the sixth is $1,000. These fines are for one calendar year. We believe that having the opportunity, much like other cities already are, by holding property owners accountable for the conduct that occurs on their properties, we'll be able to lower the amount of calls for service that the Police Department receives in regards to loud and raucous noise, and we will be able to provide a better service to the community in general.
Thank you, Deputy Chief, thank you for your good work on the committee, putting this together, and again, thank you to the City Attorney's Office, Ms. Bogosian, and I'll hand it over back to the mayor.
Okay, so with that, any additional comment?
I have a question for Deputy Chief. I'm supportive of this, but I just want to know what happens with a lot of the households here in Santa Ana are rental properties, so you don't have the property owners present frequently, I mean, I know it's not saying all the time, but a lot of times, you don't have the property owner present, so you'll have the person renting the house, and they're having a party. What happens then? Do we go on a search for the property owner, do we...
So, just like we would with any code enforcement-related issue, the first time that we go out and deal with a party at a location, we will issue a notice that says, we had a problem here, everybody needs to know. We will also send information to the property owner to alert them of the issue. It is our hope that the property owner will then contact his or her renters, and encourage them to abide by the law. If we have to go out there again, then the property owner would get another notice, this time of a fine, saying your residents are doing this activity. The hope is that we have property owners hold their renters responsible for the activity. I think we are also hoping that, when you talk about some of the large-scale, or larger locations that we respond to consistently, like an apartment complex, we have had issues with responding to that same apartment complex over and over again, and having the residents complain, because the manager rents out the center courtyard and then gets all the money, and the residents have to put up with all these parties. It's our hope that by giving notice to the owners, we will raise awareness of the ongoing problem, whether you live in the area, live in the state, or whether you're a de facto out-of-state owner.
Thank you.
Yes, go ahead, and Councilor Solario, do you have a question as well?
I want to second it.
Got it. Councilor Cecilia?
Okay, I have, my question is, I know one issue that we're faced with, and the Police Department keeps telling us, is we don't have enough officers to respond to service calls. So, this here, is this going to be something that the Police Department is going to be responding? How long is it going to take them to respond to these calls? Or is this something that is going to, just going to be referred to code enforcement? Because I know right now, that is the practice. We call and say, we really can't do anything about it, you know, code enforcement, you know, refer it out. So it's never, it's never that department's, I would say, responsibility, so I always, you know, pass the buck. So for this one, what's going to change with what's happening now?
So, the Police Department responds to hundreds and thousands of these calls for service every year. They are one of our highest-volume calls for service. We do not refer any loud music calls for service to code enforcement, nor have we ever. We will continue to address these calls for service as we already have been, and deal with them as manpower allows. However, when we do get out there, and we do find that in fact there is a violation of municipal code, we will attempt to contact the person who says they're responsible for the party. But that often is a problem in and of itself, to try to get somebody to say that, yeah, it's my party, and I'll take responsibility for it. We're going to complete a separate form in-house, which will allow us to now track this activity and send information out. We're going to take care of the changes in this law administrally, within-house.
I know you mentioned that, you know, you don't have, unless the manpower allows you to do this, so what's the response time for these type of calls?
That, that depends, ma'am, it depends on time of week, time of day, day of week, time of day. A call for service for a loud party can last 10 minutes, it could last four or five hours, depending upon what the volume is.
My experience has been, has been more what you stated, you know, four to five hours.
Hours, sure.
It's never like you're there right away.
The goal of this ordinance is to hold property owners accountable, which will in fact hold their residents accountable, and hopefully, we will have less of these calls for service, so our response time to these types of quality-of-life issues will drop.
Okay, so then, no referring to code enforcement? That's what you're saying?
No, we do not, and never have these types of calls.
Okay, I'll call you if we do.
Mr. Mayor, I want to follow up with that.
Go ahead.
Because I think some good points that have been made. Number one, I think often for lower-level calls like this, it probably does take hours for it to be responded to, and I don't think I hear otherwise, which is unfortunate, it just speaks to staffing. But if and when we do need to reach out to property owners just to confirm, it's no code enforcement staff, or staff in any other departments are going to be sending letters, calling property owners, or any of that, that's going to be all PD, PD staff.
The Police Department will handle this administrally.
Okay, that is good, and then I would just ask that we continue to work on the staffing, because every day, we're getting more and more complaints about calls not being answered, taken too long, even when I have to get involved, there was an issue with noise, where, an issue started last Friday, and it was until noon on Monday that we were able to go out and visit and respond to it. And it took two council members to do that, and then some additional follow-ups, and, you know, last I heard, we moved from 51 vacancies last September to 61 at the end of December, as of a couple weeks ago, we're at 64 vacancies, and, you know, the trend line isn't necessarily good, so I do worry that, this looks like we're going to be doing a lot, but if we don't respond in two, three, or four hours, these people are gone, the party's over, I mean, it's, makes it very difficult. So, when we do policies like this, we got to tie them with staffing, because if not, it just looks good, but it makes it hard for us to really do anything about it.
You'd be surprised how often the parties still go in Los.
Yep, depends also on when you get the call, though, but if you get a call at, you know, 1:00 in the morning, they're not going to be there at 6:00 in the morning, maybe sometimes they will. Thank you.
So, pleasure of the council on this?
May the motion approve?
I think we have a motion, we'll second it.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Next item, is that 55A? I would entertain a motion, move it. Second, those in favor, please say aye. Comment, Councilor Iglesias?
What exactly is this doing for the city of Santa Ana?
This does more for our businesses than our city that use recycled products, than it does the city as a policy. It's an incentive for businesses in Orange County. We take the, Honeytong takes the lead, and we're a member city in this area. It's state-run, can count recycle, and offers low-interest loans, technical assistance, permitting assistance, and connects businesses to recycle materials for management actions. So it helps our residents.
Okay, so that's not going to be an extra cost to the cities?
It's a volunteer effort, right? They volunteer if they want.
It's a continuing program, it's not a new program.
Okay, thank you.
All right, did we get a motion on that?
Yes.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries, 65A.
We have one committee with no members, Mr. Mayor.
Maybe we don't need that committee.
They meet biannually, it's the Ethics Legislative Affairs Committee.
I'll be on it.
If we could...
Go ahead.
What I was told was, as council members, we can't serve on more than two committees, that's what it was.
Correct. And you already are, and so is Solario, and Penaloz is already... So, look, we have had it, we've not had it.
Is there a reason why we can't serve on more than two?
You could serve on 10, if we decide you want to serve on 10, but I know that it was a big issue not too long ago.
It's almost funny, but last year, probably about this time, or two years ago, the City Council on a split vote said they didn't want me to be on so many committees.
It was an anti-Jose Solario vote.
Said I was too influential at City Hall, and so that I couldn't be on, I think I was on three committees, maybe, that I couldn't be on more than, more than two.
They got tired of me.
And not the ones that I wanted to be on. So I said, well, then you go ahead, so that's, that's why we're here. I think if folks want to give of their time in service, they ought to be able to. I think here, we have a committee where we haven't had that much interest yet, you know, we also, hopefully, in near future, will have another council member.
What happens if, right now, we appoint two people to that committee, or whoever wants to serve, and it's more than three?
Then we would just bring back a resolution for you to fix your restriction, we'd lift it, we'd lift the current...
So bring it back.
Because I had asked Julie, and that's what Julie had told me, that we couldn't serve on more than two.
Yeah, because it's in a current resolution, but that's a policy statement, you guys can change it.
This one only meets twice a year.
So, why don't we bring it back in April? We'll change it, and then we'll decide if I have to go.
The other key point, sorry, the other key point to this staff report, I know the staff really has been meaning to simplify the schedule a little bit. We did discuss this at the last meeting, but given that there were vacancies in that legislative committee, they also wanted to, again, encourage us to consider the proposed meeting schedule, which is reasonable, you know, some are going up, some are going down, and really, the committees can add additional meetings if they so warranted, but I think staff really did want to also get that reviewed and considered and voted on today.
I have a question just...
Go ahead, please.
The youth education and community services, that's, is that with joint use, or are those two separate ones?
Traditionally, it's the same individuals, I think staff was wanting to see if we wanted to split it up, but I think, given right now, the other complexes that we have, it should just be those three individuals for both.
And the other clarity I needed is on the proposed meeting schedule. I was thinking, this is, and I'm new, so if you guys could, maybe for public safety and ed bit, it's better to leave them as is versus quarterly as proposed, because there's just a lot that's always happening, and to be pushing it out for three months, I think that's problematic.
Also, we would like to keep in mind that you can always call for special meetings, besides the regular scheduled meetings.
Of course, yeah.
You always do have that option.
Okay, never mind.
Do you feel better having every other month?
No, I mean, we could call for special meetings, that's fine. It would just require two members on the committee to do it, right?
Or the chair could call it.
Oh, okay.
So that's where we have some flexibility.
Okay, so then for this one, what would be the motion?
I think right now would be, we probably just move on for the moment, in April, you come back, we change that, you know, rule that we had, and then at that time, we go ahead and appoint people to the Legislative Committee.
But you would approve what's before you tonight, we will return in April with a resolution, and asking you to appoint to the Legislative and Ethics, that would be the follow-up. So, but you would approve what's before you tonight, we would come back with the reso and a recommendation on Ethics and Legislative.
Okay.
You know, and I think, and I think too, really what she's saying, because for the purpose of the members in the public that might be watching at home, I think it really means, let's vote on Part 2 and 3, so we're approving the current list of members that have asked for these committee assignments, and then we're approving the amended proposed schedule, so we're, so I'll make that as a motion that we move Parts 2 and 3 of 65A.
And then...
And then subsequently, in the future, we'll address the Legislative Affairs, but that doesn't really need to be acted on.
All right, so we have a motion, a second, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries.
Clarification, who made the motion, Solario?
Yes.
And second was?
Iglesias. Item 65B is in boy.
Just for clarification, do I have to abstain from this vote, since I'm the one that's going to be asking to be the delegate, or?
It's a public entity, so I don't think you have any real conflict, it's like voting for yourself for an appointment. Yeah, on this item, we do have Councilmember Iglesias that already does serve us on our behalf before SCAG, so I'd be fine recommending her as the voting delegate, and we need an alternate. I think I'm her OCAG alternate, so for now, I'm willing to accept that, and if and when we get an additional council member...
I will second that.
Unless if there's somebody else that's interested, but we're serving comparable roles elsewhere.
Is that good? Okay, so we have a motion, and you seconded it. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Next item is 65C, and I know we have several folks that are interested in being appointed to Ward 4. What I would suggest is that we go ahead and listen to all the applicants that are here, so we'll go ahead and give them time to speak. I know we do not have our sixth council member here today, Councilor Sarmiento, and so I would suggest that we also roll this over to Friday after our, well, as part of our meeting, regularly scheduled meeting that we're moving over, and include that item to be continued to that time as well.
But first, we're going to hear from them.
But first, yeah, they're here, and I think we should hear from them.
And I'd like a clarification that, when we come back to this item, do the candidates need to be present, or not?
I...
It's a little short notice.
It's short notice, you know, if you can...
It's a public meeting.
If you can, it's a public meeting, I invite folks to come back if they're able to make it.
But they cannot come back because of...
If they can't come back, they can't come back. It'll be an individual choice. So with that, Madam Clerk, who are, what is the order of the candidates?
So, just for clarification, at this point, there will not be an interview of the candidates?
There will be.
There will be an interview.
There will be, I'm going to do the interview.
So we do have a process for consideration, I'd like to pass out, and we do have a ranking order that's based on the Secretary of State randomized alphabet drawing that was used for November 6.
Let's all just read your names.
Go ahead, give you the list, each has been conveyed that they will have three minutes to introduce themselves, introductions.
Okay, let's start the clock. Marisela Vallejo, if you can come down, followed by Ken Nguyen, followed by Jennifer Oliva.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers, my name is Marisela Vallejo, and I'm here tonight to humbly request your consideration for approval and honor to represent Ward 4 on behalf of all of the residents of our beautiful city, Santa Ana. A little information about myself, I was born and raised in Santa Ana, I come from a very close-knit family, I'm one of five children, my parents have been residents in the city of Santa Ana for 47 years, and I am proud to say that they have been married for that long. I have two younger brothers and two younger sisters, who all but one live in Santa Ana, and I'm a proud owner in Ward 4. I attended Adams Elementary, McFadden Intermediate, and I graduated from Saddleback High School. I then went on to do a double major at Chapman University in organizational leadership and criminal justice, and I'm currently working on my master's degree through Branman University in Irvine, to proceed with my organizational leadership degree with an emphasis on human resources, and God willing, I have less than about a year to be done with my, with my degree. As a child, my parents taught me to give back to my community. I volunteered at Our Lady of Wada Lupa Delhi Church since the age of 11 through 18, and that was only the beginning of my volunteerism. I have a 16-year-old son who attends Seagerstrom High School, and he is extremely involved in many of the sports there. Throughout his education, I have him involved, and have been an involved parent, as well as a present citizen for my ward. While still holding a full-time job as a senior analyst at Verizon Wireless, I was on the parent-teacher organization... on the parent-teacher organization at Jefferson High, Jefferson Elementary School for six years. I also served as registrar with the Santa Ana AYSO for fourteen years, and I coached in AYSO. Additionally, I've been a team parent for various Valley Little League teams, as well as in AYSO. Once my son entered high school a few years back, I became involved in the football boosters, I revamped the soccer boosters, and I'm currently in the process of creating a booster club for the track and field team. Additionally, I have had the pleasure of serving as a commissioner on the Parks and Recreation Board for about five years, and I'm currently serving as a commissioner on the personnel board, and that's been roughly the last two years. I can continue, but I do not want to board you guys. I do want you to know that I am a person of faith, family, and community. I have found great enjoyment in serving my community through all of the organizations. I believe that I am a good fit for Ward Four, as I have invested my family and time in it. I'm not tied to any special interest groups, nor do I care to be. I believe in making ethical and fiscal responsible decisions. Whether they're easy or difficult, for me, it's not me first, it's my community and city. I hope that you will consider my years of experience and involvement within the city as a valuable asset as appointed as a council member. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Now, Ken, and Madam Clerk, can we do the three minutes with the lights, so that they get a yellow light as a warning? Go ahead, Ken Nguyen, and then after Jennifer, it's going to be Gail Lee Oliver Jr.
Good evening, Mayor and council member of Santa Ana. My name is Ken Nguyen. I have been a resident of Santa Ana for over forty years, and in Ward Four for over thirty-three years. I am a retired businessman, I have devoted most of my time providing services to the community and organizing, organizing charity projects. I love my city, and I'm an incredible, proud resident of Santa Ana. I'm also a proud Vietnamese American, with my history of being chair of the city, roof of the city, and this is the first city of Orange County that embraced Vietnamese refugee after the fall of Saigon in nineteen seventy-five, and also the city where Little Saigon was started in nineteen seventy-eight. I have dedicated most of my forty years in service to, to community, and I am part of, I have served a commission, commision of a city board of park recreation for ten years, and since two thousand and sixteen, I have been serving on city planning commissioner. Aside from the city of Santa Ana presently, I'm serving as the board member of the Major Q Bond Oversight Committee for the Rancho San Diego Community College District, Vietnamese Advisory Commissioner, Foreign Guard District Attorney, External Affairs Officer of the Intervent Council in America, member of the Santa Ana Unified School District Measure I Independent Initiative Committee, an officer of a Federation of Vietnamese Catholic in the Western Region, and active leader of many various nonprofit organization. As my involvement in various organization and initiative may indicated, I'm a passionate working toward the bettering our community, and devoted my time and energy to advocate for our city and its continuing for the best interest. While I'm eager and fully devote my, my life, myself, to the city, and I love and is a community member, I believe my particular candidacy can make a significant impact for the community at large. I believe that I can offer the new perspective serving the council and contribute of a positive relationship with key decision-maker across various organization to best benefit of the people, people's interests. The most important reason why I'm, I running, I put myself in the application for the, to be appointed, that I weigh the financial impact of this process, is stated in my candidacy application, but budgetary concern at the top priority for me. It including my name among other qualified candidate, is that my hope that I can offer a very option that would, would hold the process from going to special election and to save the city over half a million dollars. As my history and working with nonprofit work may indicated, I would rather fund, the fund be directed to address our greater need in the community rather for a special election. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ken, and you kept it to three minutes. Now Jennifer, then followed by Gail, then followed by Philip Perez Ortiz Jr.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Jennifer Oliva, and I currently serve the city of Santa Ana as an arts and culture commissioner. I'm going to share a little bit about myself, my qualifications, and why I want to serve the city of Santa Ana. So a little bit of my, my background, I am a lifelong resident of the city of Santa Ana. My family has lived in Ward Four the majority of my life, and I am a product of the Santa Ana Unified School District. I attended Jefferson Elementary, McFadden Intermediate, and graduated from Seagerstrom High School. I currently have my master's degree in communication studies, where I really emphasized in instructional communication, strategic communication, and race and gender studies. So really encompassing all these three things, I feel I could be an asset to the city council. My line of work has always revolved around academia, so for the last two years, I taught at California State University, Los Angeles, and prior to that, I was able to serve my community as an assistant instructional provider for the Santa Ana Unified School Why I want to serve on the city council is because I feel that as a young person who wants to be involved in the community, I can provide some sort of perspective as a Latina, as an educated individual, and someone who has lived in the city my entire life, I can provide some sort of perspective and provide, and provide input and opinion on how to better improve our city, and yeah, I think that's all I want to state. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, if we're going to have Gail Lee come forward, followed by Philip Perez, followed by Phil Becerra.
All right. Hello, Mayor and councilmen, and everyone who are here, councilmen and councilwomen. I thank God for this opportunity. I am a bishop pastor of the Greater Light Family Church here in Santa Ana, been doing that since the year two thousand, amen, serving God, serving God's people, serving the city of Santa Ana. Been born and raised here since nineteen sixty-five. Mom, my mom and dad are here tonight, they've been here since, I believe, nineteen sixty-four, still married, and so one of the things we stand for is definitely leading people and guiding them in the right direction. I am already involved in serving Santa Ana, been serving wholeheartedly since two thousand and five. I've been a part of, love Santa Ana alongside of David Benavides, under the guidance and inspiration of Michelle Martinez. So we've served five different neighborhoods in this area, focused on the worst neighborhoods, going in there, witnessing, feeding whatever they need. We've been able to paint at least one house or one apartment for free, everything, every project we've done. We've done it, and no money was owed after we walked away. We've, I've also been blessed to, we have jail ministry right here in Santa Ana, five days, yeah, five days out of the month. We also have, we serve the elementaries here, teaching them Bible study, and I've been involved in sex trafficking. It's one thing that I want to help get that, get, get a hold of that, help victims get off the streets, worked alongside with Pastor Kevin Brown. I've also worked alongside Kevin Brown in gang prevention and, and keeping people from jumping other people into gangs, so I was able to work on that project with him as well. And so I'm wholeheartedly involved in, in serving Santa Ana. I am a team player, not trying to get in here so I can do work for Santa Ana or serve Santa, I'm already serving Santa Ana. So now I just need to thank God for this opportunity to represent Santa Ana and to become a representative for Ward Four. And so I thank everyone of you for serving, and I thank God for everyone who is serving Santa Ana. I don't have to fall in love with Santa Ana, I'm already in love with Santa Ana. Also, we started a prayer right here at the flag area under the approval of David Benavides to come together every Thursday at noon to pray for the city of Santa Ana. I've been praying for revival here in Santa Ana, I'm asking God to pour out the Spirit. I truly believe that Santa Ana is going to be a great city, and I'm asking God to just pour out the Spirit, because we need to have Santa Ana be a great city, a safe city, family city, and we need to learn how to love our neighbors, and that's what I stand for, love, family, doing God's will. So I thank you for the opportunity to come before you. God bless you.
Thank you. Philip Perez Ortiz Jr. If he is not present, let's go on to Phil Becerra.
Good evening, Mayor Polito and members of the council. Phil Becerra, resident of Ward Four, with my wife Wendy over five years, four over five years, and a resident of Santa Ana even longer. My Filipino grandfather bought a home in Artesia Pilar back in the nineteen thirties, and Becerra's have been in Santa Ana ever since. Now, in other cities, the city council looks to the next highest vote getter to fill a vacant seat. I was the only candidate in Ward, only other candidate in Ward Four in twenty eighteen, and finished with almost twenty-four thousand votes. Prior to becoming a candidate for Ward Four, I served on our city's planning commission for over five years, as well as the general plan update committee, the historic resources commission, and the OCTA's citizens advisory committee. I've also worked as a city planner for cities both large and small. I earned my bachelor's degree from USC and earned planning with a minor in public administration. My experience in those roles and my education would allow me to hit the ground running if I was appointed to the city council. But experience and education are not the only traits that are needed in the next Ward Four city council member. We need a council member who can be collaborative and work with those who have different perspectives. If you need proof of my ability, just take the fact that as a proud Trojan from USC, I even married a Bruin from UCLA. But all kidding aside, our residents need and deserve an ethical council member who is willing to stand up and take action that benefits our community and not well-funded out-of-town interests. During my campaign, I was blessed to have a very diverse base of support from business leaders and neighborhood leaders throughout the city, from French Park to Park Santiago, from South Coast Shores to Sandpoint. Regardless of who has supported my candidacy, I've always been an independent voice with an unwavering commitment to our community. When I believed that a proposed project would not benefit the residents of Santa Ana, I voted my conscience and opposed it. It's because of that that developers and other cowardly dark money interests attacked me in twenty eighteen with over three hundred thousand dollars in the smear campaign. That experience has not and will not deter my optimism in our city and my commitment to roll up my sleeves and help our golden city thrive, and I hope to do that as the next Ward Four council member.
And I want to bring it back to council, and again, what I would suggest is that we continue the balance of this discussion, but, oh, yes, we do. Dale, I'm on Dale, I think you've been down here before, Dale. Go ahead.
I'm sure there's someone else that will speak too. As stated earlier, I think all the candidates have good credentials, but I do believe in the process, and I think that we lack a real well-defined process, but picking the candidate that had the second-most votes in the election, I think, is the right thing to do. As Phil stated, he had almost twenty-four thousand votes. That's twenty-four thousand people in Santa Ana that wanted him as Ward Four representative, and I think that should be honored as much as anything else, so I hope you take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Connie Hamilton, followed by Dr. Kimberly Ho, who's the vice mayor for the city of Westminster.
Good evening, Mayor Polito and the council members. Hi, Norma. Anyway, my name's Connie Hamilton, and I have with me the board members of the South Coast Neighborhood Association, and we want to ask you to please appoint Phil Becerra. We, we voted for him. We're, we're sorry about everything that happened, but he did come in, what was it, forty-four percent of the vote, and the residents really like him. Phil has been very visible in our ward, from the neighborhood meetings to the South Coast Neighborhood Alliance meeting. He's just, he's always there, he's helped us with some matters. He's the only one of these candidates, I'm sure they're all fine candidates, but Phil has been out there and been, been visible in helping us, so that, that makes a difference to us. And I just wanted to read a couple comments. We did a petition, and it got circulated, and people made comments about Phil, and I just want to, it was, I believe it was given to you guys, and I just want to go over some of the comments that were made. One, appointing Phil to replace Roman is the right thing to do. Somebody said, I live in Ward Four, and I want representation on the city council without delay. I'm opposed to the city of Santa Ana spending our limited funds on a special election. The people of Santa Ana were wronged by Roman Reyna's fraudulent registration to run and by his various campaign tactics. Make this wrong right by appointing Phil Becerra to represent Ward Four. Do I have more time? I voted for Phil and was dismayed, this was another one, at the large amount of money spent on the slur tactics against him in the election. I think he's the voice of reason that the city council needs desperately. One says, I've known Phil for many years, and he does have the experience and knowledge to service a Ward Four council person. Phil is accessible, I'm agreeable to this, easy to speak with, immersed in the business of the city. I trust him to remain objective and focused on the needs of the community. We need more open space and linear recreation and updated general plan and growth which protects neighborhoods from negative impacts. I don't see anyone else better suited for Ward Four seat than Bill Becerra. And it just goes on and on. Another one I want to read right here, he's absolutely the very best qualified applicant, not to mention he would be seated already, but for the illegal candidacy of Mr. Reyna. But we have all types of signatures and comments, and it speaks for itself, please appoint Phil to this position.
Thank you, Connie. Thank you. Dr. Kimberly Ho, please. Welcome, and councilwoman, welcome. Mayor Pro Tem.
Hi there. My name is Kimberly Ho, I'm the vice mayor, city of Westminster. I'd like to say hello to Mayor Polito and Vice Mayor, or Mayor Pro Tem, and council members. I am here representing Mayor Tri Taw, mayor of city of Westminster. I'd like to read his letter, and actually, I would like to also later give you a copy of this letter, if you don't mind. Dear Mayor Polito and council members, I would like to express my support to Ken Khan Nguyen to be appointed to the Santa Ana City Council representing Ward Four. Ken is one of the unique community leaders that put his people first before himself. He is a selfless man who quietly engages in a diverse cross-section of our society, always trying to improve the lives of the community members. His efforts have helped Little Saigon flourish and become an educational and cultural asset to the county. He led important projects in the city of Westminster, such as the Vietnam War Memorial and Little Saigon Business District Monument signs. In addition, he has helped organize many annual public events, such as Christmas Wish Program, the Tech Parade, Moon Festival, and many others, as part of his goal to build a multicultural county, to promote cultural awareness and togetherness. Ken has a significant and sustained influence through his non-bias, positively focused interests in the community's needs. He has made significant inroads within city and county government, opening lines of communication necessary for the growth and success of the city. Ken's contributions to the city of Westminster have been greatly appreciated, and we are confident that his efforts and expertise would benefit other cities as well. Therefore, we strongly encourage you to vote to appoint Ken Nguyen to serve on the Santa Ana City Council representing Ward Four. Thank you, Mayor Polito and council members. And... Thank you, Mayor Polito and council members, and Mayor Protem. I do believe Ken Wen will represent Ward 4 well and will be a great colleague and partner to your city council. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Please say hello to Mayor Tretah for us.
I will. Thank you.
With that, I believe we have no more speakers on this item. So I would bring it back to council.
I just have.
Councilor Iglesias.
A question for the process. Now that we're here, Ms. Madam City Attorney, we're here with, you know, listening to the five candidates, five candidates that showed up today. So I know that there was a request for us to delay it till Friday, bring it back, and have, I guess, continuation of this meeting. But what is that exactly? What does it exactly mean?
So part of your process is you could, you could address this situation tonight. I think there was a previous motion to adjourn this item. You took, you heard the candidates, as out of respect, they were here this evening. So if you continue this, or adjourn this item to Friday, the next point and the next step in the process would be for you to select who you might want to interview again, or to ask a question, or additional questions of all of the people who interviewed today. What is proposed and what is before you today? It would then be a process where each of you might want to identify your top one or two individuals. And you could, I think it is recommended that you could then take only those individuals who received at least, that were ranked at least one or two by four or more of you, and then you could ask those individuals additional questions as well. This process is similar to the one you engaged in in 2006. But again, you can use whatever process you want. It's just a recommended process.
But this would be on Friday or today?
This would be on Friday. Since you voted to adjourn to Friday, you would do that on Friday, unless there was a motion to reconsider, and you wanted to do that this evening.
Do we have the questions? Because I know when we were trying, in other, I guess, in other processes, there's a list of recommended questions that you, as a, you know, attorney, would recommend for us to ask. Do you have that?
We could put some questions together for you. Out of respect for the council, we've left it up to you to ask the questions you want. If you want some recommended, suggested questions, we can gather those from our last process and from some other cities that have engaged in this process most recently, in the last few months.
I would like that, just to, you know, so we're all, like, on the same page.
It's strictly up to us, you know.
That's right.
Strictly up to whatever. We want to ask 10 questions or 100 questions, whatever we want to do. Councilor Solario.
Yeah, just very brief. When I just speak with Councilman Sarminta today, he reminded me that when he went through this process some years ago, they did a special meeting as well. And so he actually got appointed through a very similar process as well.
There was a lot of back and forth. I remember it well. And finally, because it was, there was no four votes, finally, somebody switched their position, and all of a sudden, there was four votes, and he was appointed. But it was a multi-hour process. And that's fine. I'm not suggesting others. But I think if we do bring up questions, we can ask people on Friday additional questions. And then it's up to, you know, four members of the city council. Four people decide on a candidate, you've got a candidate. If not, you've got a special election.
So, Mayor, my question would be to you and the council members, would you like to be given the freedom and the discretion to ask questions at will, so that you would bring every candidate up, and each of you could ask them whatever you want? Or would you prefer that you can submit some questions to the city clerk before Friday? The city clerk can then put those questions on a piece of paper, and then you could ask each candidate those questions? That part of the process is really up to you.
I really don't have a preference. I've done it both ways. And it's really, you know, up to the individual members what they're comfortable with. I think folks have told us, you know, pretty much, you know, some of their credentials. Frankly, I think we've got some good candidates, only one of which decided to run. So this kind of says, gee, maybe instead of having elections, we just ought to ask people, and because, because it's painful to run.
$175,000.
And it discourages a lot of people. A lot of people say, "I want to be on the council, but I don't want to be beaten up like that." And so they stay home and have normal lives. And now we saw, you know, some good candidates here. But again, only one of that group, you know, wanted it badly enough to run. And that, of course, is Phil Becerra. But I think, you know, what I'd suggest is if you have questions, we could ask them of the candidates between now and Friday through the clerk. Also, if staff has questions that they want to suggest for us to consider, again, it's up to us. They could give us questions, and we could say we want to ask them, or we don't want to ask them. It's up to us.
I would feel more comfortable being the first time that I go through this. It would be, like, if you could give me some questions that are typically asked. And then if I have, like, a follow-up question to those questions, and that would be.
You can add it. All right.
I have a.
Go ahead.
Just in regards to the questions, Ms. City Attorney, I would, my preference would be that we do, you do put together 10, 15, 20 questions that are normally asked, but that those questions are kept away from us so that no, you know, questions are leaked to candidates before, in advance, or any and whatnot. And that way, everybody has a fair chance. And we see the questions when, when we receive them, and the applicants as well. And nothing is leaked. I mean, I think it just makes the process fair for, for these applicants. But I wasn't here the last time that this happened. I was in high school. So. Yeah, I was close to though, maybe. So just, just wanted to state that.
So to be clear, you want the questions emailed to all of you in advance, or no?
Well, I was suggesting that, and I was suggesting that they even get to the candidates and that they all answer. Another way to do it is give it to nobody, and then we just ask them on the spot on Friday.
I know the way they've done it before on Friday, like, 30 minutes before, kind of give it to the, to the candidates, so that at least they're prepared.
Yeah.
To all the candidates at the same time, and then we just ask them those questions.
Okay, so the questions will be available for both the council and the public 30 minutes prior.
That's fine.
Got it.
I'm, I'm good with it. It's another way to do it.
Yeah, that works.
And they're sample questions, until you pick them.
But you also don't have to follow the questions.
Correct, correct. You can.
That's just a guidance.
It's a guideline. You can decide, I want to have my own question.
And I want to remind the council that in your packets this evening are the applications that the candidates filled out, and they answer quite a few questions as well. So if you haven't had the opportunity to look at those, you have the answers to those questions.
All right. Any other thoughts? So did we already take the vote to put this?
There is a mention to adjourn, but I do not have the vote.
All right, so let's do a motion in a second, just to formalize it.
I have a comment that's not related, but it's related but not related.
Go ahead. Make your comment.
And this is for Ms. Vallejo. You look very familiar. Are you a twin? Oh, see, I went, I went to Dalhuy Church as well, and I remember always seeing the two twins collecting the money. As a little kid, that's why. I was like, is she a twin? Was that the, okay.
And I think they're both equally good. I was in AYSO with you as well as parents.
Yeah, in Small World.
All right, so I'd like to consider a motion by Mayor Protem, second by Councilor Solario. And that this also be brought to our next meeting, which is really going to be a continuation of this meeting, you know, 5 o'clock on Friday after, after we take up the other item that we've already continued. And we'll limit it to those two items. I don't want to put more things on the agenda. I think that's enough.
Yeah.
That's, so we have a motion in a second. Those in favor, please say aye. Aye, disposed, motion carries unanimously.
Where are we?
And thank you for all the candidates.
We have 75A. Staff recommendation is requesting to continue.
All right, 75A, there's a request for continuance. I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, disposed, motion carries. Item 75B.
Can we just go back to the 75A?
Yes, we can go back.
We can go back to 75A.
Is that going to be for the next meeting, or what meeting?
I think it's a tabling.
Tabling for how long?
You're removing it from the agenda, and we will go ahead and place it on a future agenda?
They'll decide when.
You'll decide when?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, 60, 75B is in boy.
What was the reason that, that the item's getting rolled over? Is it just more, more information to be presented?
We needed some additional information regarding the application. So we wanted to do the research before we come back to the city council.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so I just wanted to know how, if I may.
Yes.
So just knowing, because I won't be here at the next meeting, April 2nd. You know, just putting it out there that I won't be here, so I just.
Will it be after April 2nd?
It may or may not be, but we would definitely have to re-notice. So I don't think we probably won't make April 2nd.
I think what she's requesting is, can we do it at the second meeting in April?
But would that.
Because you won't be there on the first meeting in April.
Yes, but how does that affect their process?
Does it hurt the project?
Depending on the information, we'll update you. But I don't think we'll be ready by April 2nd, so.
So it'll be the second meeting.
Yes, but would it, would it hurt the project, though?
At this point, the information that we need may need some additional time for us to, to do the research, to be complete. I don't think it will hurt the project, because they potentially could still be able to meet their September timeline.
Okay, so the reasons why you're delaying this is because you're waiting for some information from them?
Yes.
Did you ask them that information from them before this meeting?
We, we have.
Before this meeting, you had asked?
Before this meeting, we made contact with them and shared with them some of the questions that we have and share with them that we're going to recommend, we're going to recommend for continuance.
Okay, yeah, I kind of have, I do have an issue, because, you know, if we had those concerns, why didn't we bring them up before?
We, it actually came up during our process today, the necessity for that information.
So we were given an incomplete, I guess, I guess, an incomplete.
Package.
Package.
I think there were additional questions that we want to make sure we have confirmation of the, the answer before we present it to the public for the public hearing at this point. That came up after the planning commission heard the, the matter.
And they were okay with that?
It's, it's something that we needed to make sure we have an answer to it before we would present it to the, to the council.
Okay, well, I'm not okay with, I think, you know, if you put it on the agenda, it should already be complete. You should already have everything before we.
That would be, that would be the ideal situation. But we also want to make sure we have all of the information for you, and that wasn't available.
Okay, and I get that, but I'm not comfortable with, you know, just moving something because you don't have the information. It should have already been there.
Understood.
All right, so we have a motion in a second, but we have one no. This time placed for the agreement with the 10 franchise vehicle dealers in Santa Ana for establishment of a resident vehicle incentive program in the annual amount of 1.7 million, not to exceed 8.5 million over five years, and approve appropriate adjustment. I know we went over this before. Any words from the city manager on this item?
We're actually very supportive and proud of this. There you go, sorry. We're actually very supportive and proud of this program. It will provide an incentive for our residents to purchase one of their most expensive purchases of their family here in the city of Santa Ana.
All right, let me open up the public hearing. Is there anybody that wishes to address us on this item? I know we have representatives. Go ahead, Peter.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. I'll just very quickly thank the council for its direction. Thank staff for working with us over the last seven months on bringing to a program that will benefit your residents. This money, these monies will go to them to incentivize them to purchase their, purchase or lease their vehicle here in Santa Ana. And the proceeds will be going to the city. So thank you again. Happy to answer any questions, but just wanted to.
Thank you. I want you to be on standby. I think we might be ready just to move forward. Councilor Iglesias.
Just a question for this. This is a program that's also been implemented in another city, right?
Yes, Westminster has had this program for several years, a version of this program.
So the 1.7 million that we have here, that is going to be, where's that money coming from? From the general fund?
From the sales tax generated by the vehicle sold.
Okay, but that's going to go into the general fund, and the general fund, we're going to rebate it back to the dealer, who's going to rebate it to the customer.
Correct. And then we will reimburse the dealer every 30 days. After the first 90-day period, every 30 days, we'll be reimbursing the dealership.
And then I know there's here something about doing some type of, I guess, marketing or some type of.
They've made a commitment to spend $25,000 each dealership. That's 10 dealerships, $25,000 each to get the word on the street to our residents.
Oh, okay. I thought it was $25,000 total, so it's 250,000.
That's what their commitment is. And then in the, in the action for you to approve tonight is $25,000 for staff to take care of the administrative cost, our portion of the administrative costs, to do all the reimbursements.
And where's that money coming from?
General fund.
And how many staff would that be?
About .25.
Okay, okay. And then, but is that a, is that going to be like a permanent .25? Or how long does this rebate go for?
It could go as long as two years if it's extended to the maximum of the contract. So we're not hiring a new body. We'll have an economic development person doing the rebates, and then they will, they will work with the finance department to issue the check.
All right, do we have a motion in a second on this one?
I just wanted to, you know, voice my support for it, just to make it clear that this isn't money that's going to the auto dealers. It's money that's going to go back to our residents in a form of a rebate. The sales tax is increasing, unfortunately. And we want to make sure that our residents continue to shop here in our city, especially big items like a car. I just bought one in February. Yeah, wanted to buy it before the, the sales tax increase. But, so, but, yeah, and that's pretty much it.
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of questions.
Yes, go ahead.
You know, on just, just bookkeeping stuff, and maybe staff or somebody representing the association can address some of these questions. How are we going to prove residency? Because once they come to Santa Ana Auto Mall and they hear that we have this thing, everyone's going to be a Santa Ana resident. And they're going to be showing old driver's licenses, old car registrations, all sorts of documentation. What are, what are we going to use?
Certainly, Councilman Solario. The onus is on the, on the auto dealer. Staff has provided and will be working with us on demonstrating that this is actually a resident of the city currently when they purchase the vehicle. If it does not meet, match the, the city's records, that rebate is not.
Which records? We have a variety of records. We have water bill records. We have traffic tick records. We have all sorts of records.
We'll mostly be, the city staff will be mostly checking their residency and our maps to make sure they're not in an unincorporated area of Santa Ana.
What proof? Driver's license, a.
Water bill.
Maybe it needs to be like an active water bill with their name on it. I want something that ensures that the day of, they are Santa Ana residents. Because a lot of folks, you know, have an older address on their driver's license or different names on, on, on all sorts of documents. And so which one are we going to use?
We'll use a number of, of documents to use. Driver's license, registration of the new vehicle, where that will be. And then we'll verify it by checking.
Maybe that, maybe that might be it, requiring that those cars be registered to Santa Ana as a start. I don't know that that should be the only thing, because I could buy a car, and I'm going to say, you know, I'm going to keep it at, you know, at my grandma's house and use that address. It's probably legal for them to do that.
And it is a discussion we've had with each of the dealers, because they want to make sure that they're making that initial outline.
And I hear you, but seven months later, we still don't have definition on that. And this, because it's an expensive program, I want good, not just verification on the front end, but some accounting on the back end. I mean, we're talking about over $8 million over a few years. That's a substantial amount of money. Maybe that comes back separately so we could agree. so we could agree on it, but I want to be very clear that it seems like there's absolutely no rules on who's going to be eligible to receive this.
Councilmember Solario, as you know, that the approval is separate than the actual guidelines. We could bring the guidelines back to you and polish that up.
Well, interestingly enough, the last time we did the guidelines, and this time was going to be actually approving the agreement, but I think that piece hasn't come back. Maybe that could come back separate.
Absolutely.
But that's very, very critical at a number of levels.
And we'll be happy to work with staff to make sure that we have...
So that's, that's one thing. The second thing, I know it starts off, I think, with the two-year with some renewals. You know, we may see after year one that the program's not going well. And so what flexibility on their end or our end, because it could be an issue that you have on your end, what, what, what could we do if we wanted to stop it after one year, at their, at their insistence or ours?
Well, the, the first term of the program is two years.
Right.
And then we have two, then we have the one...
Up to another three.
Two-year extension, and then a one more year extension in the agreement that you have. We will be evaluating the effectiveness based on the increase of Santa Ana cars sold to Santa Ana residents. We took 2007, eight, 17 as the base year. That's some of the numbers you'll see in your staff report. I believe it was 1,600 new cars. So we're going to look for increase of that from the baseline in all categories of new, used, and leased.
So again, my question is, if after the very first year, they don't like the numbers, we don't like the number, what flexibility is there to stop the program then?
Yeah, it's a two-year agreement. There's flexibility after two years.
Well, I have a little bit of concerns with that, because again, they may want to have major revisions, we may want to have major revisions, there may be issues of, you know, the money going back and forth. These are big dollars. These are very, very big dollars. What makes it tricky about just making this a true cost benefit with the increment in how many residents is, the unknown factor in this is that if we don't do this, some folks from Santa Ana may not buy in Santa Ana, and that would be hard to track, because you can't track what doesn't happen. So I do believe we need to do something very similar to this, but I just want to make sure that we have some tight constraints on how we spend the dollars, because 8 million bucks. I know some of us were concerned about the $4 million for the, for the, the new MOU with the police officers. This is 8 million bucks with very little accountability thus far, and again, I want to do this, but I, we just need some additional detail on, on that.
So if I may, Councilman, the program that was mentioned earlier in Westminster, the actual duration was for the length of the duration of the sales tax increase, which was 10 years. We understood that we were not going to be able to achieve that here with the one and a half cent and then the one cent. So, understanding that the city was looking for a commitment to marketing the program, which was not in place in Westminster, the dealers each agreed to a minimum of $25,000 per dealer, $250,000 marketing program. Understanding that investment, anything less than at least an initial two years was, was a challenge. So what we've worked out with staff, with the council's direction, is the two, two, and one at any point in time, and candidly, at any point in time, if we aren't hitting the numbers that we think, understanding that car sales are already down, so we're looking to just make sure we have the ability to continue to...
Right.
Right, even there, but we're going to be working with staff, just continuing to monitor the program and providing numbers. And again, I totally understand the sensitivity to the, to the lump sum of the appropriation.
Right.
That's money that's going back into the residents of the city, kind of offset by the increase in the sales tax.
Mm-hmm.
And you're still getting that base one cent.
I don't want to, I don't want to discount the 250,000 that you're using for marketing, but on our side, it's over $8 million from a low-income community, so I just want to make sure that we have all the, all the checks and balances there.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
If I may, right before we vote, do you have a comment?
A quick follow-up. I agree with what Councilmember Solario said, there should be that accountability, definitely. And I think maybe an idea that we could play with is, is requiring on part of the auto dealers, when, when the person comes in to, you know, as part of proof of residency, maybe bring a utility bill with them. Utility bill and your driver's license, and have multiple factors that they need to, to bring. Be like when you go get a job in an I-9. Driver's license, a utility bill.
Sure.
Same address in Santa Ana, boom. Just to make sure that there's, that there is that accountability, because that is important.
Absolutely. So what, yeah, I apologize. So what we're going to be coming, working with staff and come back is what we've done in Westminster as well, that has actually worked there, and to whatever degree is, gives a level of comfort that we are making sure that it is a Santa Ana resident. Again, the onus is on the dealer to demonstrate that proof to whatever satisfaction of the council there might be.
Let, if I may, let me step in. I know that I, you know, had meetings with you, Peter, and dealers and others as we were struggling with this, and another aspect that's important is we want to sell cars. If we don't sell cars, we're just going around in circles here, and we don't want to do that. We have some of the best dealers in the country here in Santa Ana, and we don't want to get in their way and end up reducing sales. So as we do this, we need to work, whether, make sure we're verifying, we don't want to give the money to the wrong people, but I think we could be doing campaigns here in town encouraging more of our residents to shop local, and, and we could use this to do that. Also, we have to help the dealers, because there's a lot of folks that come here that are not Santa Ana residents, and we have to make sure we don't scare them away, because if they go to another dealer in another town, now we got zero. And, and so this is a slippery slope and a dangerous slope, and we have to help our, our friends as they market to non-Santa Ana residents that come into town and give us their tax dollars by buying here. Forget the rebate, there's no rebate there. They're just people that are coming here. So, so, so putting the right spin on this is very important, because people from outside the city, they don't have a lot of time to look at all the details. They're just going to say, gee, you know, there's a big problem in Santa Ana, they have higher taxes, let's go to Tustin. We don't want that. You know, now we've really gone backwards. Now we're going to punish our friends, you know, people that are out here competing every day on a very difficult basis. So as we do this, yes, let's work with staff and work together, but make sure that, that we succeed at the end of the day.
Absolutely.
And, and that we don't scare people away, because some cities have. Some cities, you know, the wrong image gets out there, people don't know all the rules, they figure if I go to another city, I'm going to pay less money, and truth is, you're not, because this tax only applies to Santa Ana residents, which is why we're giving them the rebate, but we don't want to scare everybody else. Peter, do you, or some of the dealers here, do you know what percentage of your sales are non-Santa Ana residents? How much?
Ninety percent.
Ninety percent. See, like at Crevié BMW, ninety percent of the folks that come and give us money, because every time they buy a car or lease a car or service a car, it's Santa Ana taxes, they're not from Santa Ana. We can't lose track of that, and all of a sudden hurt 10% of the 90%. I mean, that would be devastating, devastating. So, so let's track this one closely, make sure we don't create any unintended consequences. And, and to the dealers, look, if you see us making a mistake, or Peter, you know, we're putting our fit, our foot in quicksand because we have an unintended consequence, let us know right away.
Appreciate it very much.
Because we want you to sell cars. You know, you're, that's your purpose, that's what you need to be doing. And, and we want to be partners with you, because that's part of what keeps our general fund going, and, and money's coming in. Councilmember Iglesias?
So for Westminster, what do they use for proof of residency?
I don't, I don't have that answer for you right now, but I imagine it is something like Councilmember Solario's asking. Utility bills, driver's license, or rental agreements?
Zip code.
Zip code.
Just the zip code?
Can you come over here?
So, so what Al is saying is, we have the list of zip codes, et cetera. Now, in Westminster, we don't have the same challenges you do here, where you have zip codes for Santa Ana that are actually in unincorporated area.
Or cities.
Right, exactly, other cities. So we do need to make sure that we have perhaps some other levels of identification and actual residency to demonstrate to that.
And the zip code on which document?
Right, exactly.
You could have multiple zip codes on multiple documents.
Yeah, because also too, my question would be for, like, young buyers that don't have, you know, any bills in their name. So, other than a driver's license and...
There is a component of this program, the threshold for the purchase has to be over $15,000. So, just the assumption that anyone who's going to make that level of purchase is going to have something in their name that demonstrates their residency. But we'll, but we'll work with staff certainly to clarify that, so it's unquestioned.
Yeah, so that'd be something that you're going to be monitoring, your department?
Yeah, what we can do is, you can give us the guidance tonight to add a section to the guidelines, asking for verification via utility bills and driver's license and other appropriate documentation, and move the program forward, or you could have us bringing the guidelines back to you and approve the agreement tonight.
And then the .25 person will be monitoring that, that information?
Absolutely. Our economic development department will, will be the intake, they will take the applications, verify the information attached to the application. If we can't verify it, then we don't rebate the money.
Okay.
And then it would be transferred down to finance for issuance of a check.
Okay.
Al, I know you're here, Al Predix from Crevié, did you want to add anything?
No, I just wanted...
Go ahead, come to the mic.
I just wanted to let Jose know that the residents, we're just trying to protect the residents of Santa Ana. The dealers aren't getting one penny, not zero, in regards to this. And we did the stats, and it's about 10% of all the dealers that we have, and we have six of them, belonging to Penske Automotive Group and the Santa Ana Auto Mall, that prevail, or are involved in this. But the residents that show up, they're not going to show up with the utility bill. They're not going to do that. And the only reason we're going to try to do the paperwork for the city is so that, quite frankly, they don't have to spend the money, or you don't have to spend the money to do it. We're better at it, but they're not going to show up with their utility bills. So it's going to delay the transaction.
Could you lose sales if you ask them too many questions and they go to another dealership?
They're just going to leave.
They're just going to leave?
So what we do in finance is we get their zip code, and if their zip code is in Santa Ana, then they get the rebate. And if they don't get the, if we don't get the rebate monies, then we, as the dealers, are stuck.
So that probably would be a more functional mechanism.
So it's through finance, and that made a little, that made sense. So when they go through the financing, they have to write their address and everything, so that's all...
So essentially, they fill out the paperwork, et cetera, they get that rebate, which they typically put into their down payment. After the fact, the dealer then submits it to the city for verification and reimbursement. And if they, it doesn't match up with city records, they don't, there's further follow-up to see, demonstrate if they actually are a city resident, and that conclusion is that they are not, that rebate does not go back to the dealer.
Yeah, but the finance is something too, that it's pretty...
Correct.
Correct, yeah.
Pretty straightforward with zip code.
Well, I mean, it's straightforward, but again, but if there's clear rules, both on the marketing side and on the accountability side, there just needs to be real clear rules on which documents and how recent, and similarly with Santa Ana business licensees. There's, there's some businesses, they have to be licensed in every city to do business in that city. So you may be thinking you're helping a Santa Ana business, but it's really somebody, you know, in Beverly Hills that has a business license here because they operate, you know, some business. But for some business, you got to be, you got, you got to be registered at multiple cities.
Look, I, I think along those lines, we should be making sure that whenever we can buy from Santa Ana dealers...
That we should.
We ought to be for all our fleets and all the things that we do. Also, maybe a little program to encourage city employees. You know, we all get paid, city employees from the general fund, which is supported, so when they can buy Santa Ana, even though they're not Santa Ana residents, we ought to be encouraging those sales as well. And if somebody can't prove residency, well, then they don't get the rebate from the get-go, but let's, let's not turn the sale away. Let's try to bring the customer in and get them to sign on the bottom line and have them drive out in a new car. That's what we need to be doing. All right, can we wrap it up?
Mr. Hamlin, did you want to say something? It seemed like you wanted to...
Oh, he's walking up. You just said, sign on the bottom line. In finance, there's like 15 sheets that customers sign already. Why not just have one that says, under penalty and perjury, this is where you live, just, you know, confirming you live there in Santa Ana. That way, there's at least, you know, some, some kind of legality to it.
There is a document that says that this money is coming to the city.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, one of the things I wanted to say is that, you know, if, if you have somebody that we're, that we're going to be giving the rebate to, they're also going to be paying the 1.5% sales tax. So if a guy's buying a $40,000 car, he's going to pay $600 more in, in sales tax to get a $500 rebate. So the problem only becomes a problem when we get up into that area, you know, below, you know, $37,000 or $35,000 where someone's trying to, you know, do that. The other thing that I'm concerned about, that we, we're talking to our staff about, is people that live in Santa Ana that want to use a Tustin address, so they don't have to pay the one and a half percent sales tax. That's another aspect that nobody's even brought up. So we got to make sure that when you have somebody that lives in Santa Ana, that they're going to pay the one and a half percent sales tax.
They'd prefer no rebate.
Exactly, yeah, because they're going to, exactly. So, you know, that's what, and again, that's where you have a driver's license and some other proof of, you know, where they live. And someone brought up, you have a college student, you know, a lot of these young, young adults are still living at home. Well, that utility bill's not in their name, probably their phone bill's not in their name.
Water bill's not in their name.
Water bill's not in their name, so the only thing we're going to have...
Their license.
Is a driver's license that's hopefully going to show, you know, where they're living. So it gets a little bit tricky at times, but, you know, we're just going to do our best, and whatever you come up with from the staff, we'll, we'll work with.
We need to make it simple, otherwise we'll drive Santa Ana residents out of Santa Ana, and let's go buy a car in Tustin.
That is, and then you've lost everything.
Now we're...
Except for the one and a half percent that you're going to get because they're going to pay it.
Yeah, but we've lost that, we've lost the sale, we've lost everything.
Right.
Yes, Al?
So the average price of a BMW is $58,000. The average price, and we sell 84,000, 8,400 a month.
It's a lot of cars.
It's a lot of cars.
Eight, four hundred...
Eight, four hundred annually.
At fifty...
Fifty-eight thousand.
Fifty-eight thousand. We don't want to lose any of them, Al.
[laughing]
Not one. All right, I think we beat this one to death pretty good. Did we have a motion on this one?
I'll move it.
Second by Mayor Plutim, those in favor, please say aye. Aye, those opposed, motion carries.
I do have a question for our city attorney, if she...
No, no, let's just...
Mr. Mayor, this is a public hearing, so I'd like you to conduct the public hearing, if you could.
Well, I asked, does anybody wish to address this? Is the public hearing?
We have not received...
So we'll close the public hearing, this is just for council. We have a motion and a second. Those in favor, please say aye. Aye, those opposed, motion carries.
I believe it's a five-oh item. If I'm correct.
We do have an appropriation adjustment?
Yeah.
Five, zero, is that correct?
No, there was a no. So it's, it doesn't go anywhere, because...
I do have a suggestion that I'd like our city attorney to see if it might be okay.
And then you'll vote yes, possibly?
Or maybe the staff, yeah, I, I want to figure out how, as part of this motion, we could say that it's still conditional on council-approved set of verifiable residency stats for the residents, and then comparable documentation for the business licensees, because that wasn't in the agreement we saw a month or so ago, and it's not here. So I'm willing to approve everything as is, I just want an additional clause or part of this motion that it says that this is not valid until there are approved lists of verifiable, you know, IDs or documentations for both to prove residency and business licenses.
And do you want that to come back to you, or do you want that to be...
I wanted it to come back to us, so that it could be approved.
We'd like the guidelines brought back to us.
So whoever made the motion, if you want to just make a friendly amendment, you could just say, you make that motion conditioned upon those standards coming back to the council.
And being approved.
For final approval.
And being approved before...
And for final approval.
Before this program is marketed.
So you could approve this...
Because again, for clarity, we want to give that clarity to residents and businesses right away, not, not afterwards.
So, so you could do a, if that's how you, that's an option, if you wanted to do it that way?
Either that, or if it doesn't pass, we'll have our next meeting in April, we'll have Councilor Sarmiento, maybe he is, you know... Councilor Sarmiento. Maybe he is, you know, supportive. Because I know, looking at the dealers and their faces, you'd rather keep it simple.
Well, and we want clarity. I think we want-
But you don't want complicated clarity.
No, just clarity.
You want simple. Al, come to the mic, please.
Well, it was all effective April 1st.
I know.
Yeah, so we need to approve this today, or-
We need to get it done today.
Mr. Mayor, I think the way to do it is just have us bring the-- approve the agreements tonight, which allows us to start the program. We won't be writing checks back to the dealerships for 90 days. So we'll just bring back the guidelines only back to you after April 2nd.
And if we can't agree on those, we'll get the dealers back in here and we'll pound it out.
But what's holding us is appropriation.
The guidelines?
No, but what's holding-
No, they've got to make amendments to customers in April. They want to start April 1st.
Yeah, we can work with them to establish the clarity, but we just won't come to you yet. That's what we'll have to establish.
But they want to be able to make sales, though, from April 1st to whenever-
And we want them to as well.
Can you do it before this Friday? Put it on this Friday's agenda?
Or do it later during this meeting?
I can add a paragraph before Friday.
Or do it during this meeting, and we keep talking, and maybe later on in this meeting, we-
Can you go in another room right now with the folks that are here?
I accept that challenge.
All right. Al, can you guys hang around a little bit longer, Bruce? Go next door.
Or we could take this into Friday as well. I know you prefer not to, but-
No, go ahead, go ahead. If you can figure out-
Even better.
Because it's not like this is the first time you guys have thought about this. We've been working on this for many months already.
Because what's holding us is the appropriation, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Otherwise, we get, we have four votes in favor.
Just so that I'm clear, you're just trying to look for verification of residency. That's the challenge.
I mean, we're eight million bucks with no strings.
Okay, verification of residence.
All right, let's see what else we can. So we'll not vote on that for a moment. Go on to maybe 85A, B and C. Councilor Penalosa, 85A.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to-- this is a California Senate bill that was introduced by Senator Morlock, Senate Bill 689, which restricts the California Department of Public Health from authorizing or reauthorizing any needle and syringe exchange programs unless the city or county approves it. I just want to make myself clear that I believe in the science and the research. I know that needle exchange programs do help combat hepatitis and HIV diseases. However, the way that these programs have been run and operated in our city has been very detrimental to our public, our kids, our parks, our library, our bike trails, you name it. We got really out of hand over the last couple of years just seeing how bad it got within our city. So I just wanted to put this on the agenda so to see if my colleagues and us as a city could support this bill, because it should be controlled by cities. It should be up to us to decide how these programs are going to operate in our city, where they're going to operate, how are they going to go about operating and controlling them. Because we saw, you know, I sat through forums last summer with the needle exchange program. They had no answer to any of the questions that residents and business owners were asking. They just said, you know, "We'll have to get back to you" and never answer any questions. So it's a group of volunteers that don't have the adequate staff or resources to control it, and that's problematic for me. And I know it's a safety and health issue to all our residents and our kids. So that's my reason for putting this on the agenda, so we could come together and voice our support for it, and hopefully we could get this passed in the Senate.
Thoughts, council members? Mayor Protem?
No, I just want to thank Councilmember Penalosa for bringing this up, and I'm very supportive of it.
Councilor?
Yeah, I was going to agree with what you're saying. It had a lot of effect, especially in our beaches, too. Because a lot of what was happening when, you know, the rains and stuff, they would end up in our beaches. So I think it's-- even though they're not in Santa Ana, of course, but, you know, it's just that quality of life for residents has been affected. And I know that here in Santa Ana, especially at the library, I know many of the employees were concerned. And they were asking us to do something about this, you know, this epidemic in a way. So I believe also, I know it's a Senate bill for Senator Morlock, but also I believe Supervisor Doe also. I think the cities were sued, weren't they? Or they did some type of resolution to say, you know, "We don't want them in our cities." So what you're asking for us is just to sign onto a resolution supporting the bill, and just going up to the Senate and saying the city of Santa Ana supports-- is in support of the Senate bill? Is that how I'm understanding it?
That's what I was thinking. And I spoke to our-- Casey, who does our legislation up in Sacramento. And it's basically, you know, us as a city will come together. If we approve this resolution, we'll basically send the message to whatever health committee in Sacramento has put together amongst other senators across the state and say, "Hey, you know, the city of Santa Ana is supporting this," and what other other city wants to support it as well. And that will help, you know, it could help move the bill forward and get approved. The former Assemblymember Solario will probably know more about that process, but that's where I was coming from. And it's good that you mentioned beaches, that they would end up in our beaches, because when you look at the data and the stats, you know, most of the overdoses do occur on our beach cities in the county. And these programs aren't operating on our beach cities in the county. They choose to operate in Santa Ana. And, you know, Costa Mesa sued them, numerous cities sued them, and Santa Ana, we were just kind of, "Okay, we'll operate in Santa Ana." And that was my fear about this, the way this program was operating, is that they had no regard to the safety of our residents, and were taking advantage of a community that we don't have many resources to fight these things. And they saw it as an easy area to do so. So that's basically where this came from and why I'm hopeful that this could get-- and just to clarify, this isn't banning the program outright. This is just giving local control, bringing local control to our county and the city, and for us to be able to choose how these programs operate, if they do, and when. And, yeah, that's pretty much it. If anyone else has any comment? Mr. Mayor, thank you.
No, thank you. Make a motion to maybe adopt this, or what would you like?
It would be a motion to direct staff to bring back a resolution.
All right. Can you make a motion?
Yeah, I think for the sake of time, a letter, just direct the staff to write a letter in support of this piece of legislation, just because committees are going to start. Yeah, committees are going to start, and they need to hear sooner than later.
So just direct staff to write a letter of support.
Yep.
I'll sign it, and we'll send it to Sacramento. Can that be your motion?
Yeah.
All right, I'll second it. Those in favor, please say aye. Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Item 85B, that's Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I brought this item forward because I sit on the Civic Center Authority, and Building 28, which is 605 Santa Ana Boulevard, right next door, that is up for sale. It's the state building, and I believe that we should look into purchasing it, so we can have a more room here. We have a lot of wear and tear in the council chambers and City Hall next door. We should consider, you know, purchasing the building, so we have a place to go to in case we redo this building here. We-- the city of Santa Ana is in control of nine acres out of the 29 acres here in the Civic Center, and we're a stakeholder. And I really believe that we should seize the opportunity, because this area here is within an opportunity zone, which President Trump has determined that these places here, there could be some tax cuts if you invest more. So it's a golden opportunity for us to go ahead and look into, see what we can do of purchasing the land and the building. Maybe we can use it to our advantage. It also comes with the surrounding land. And if there's-- is Mr. Fuad here? You can speak to my colleagues a little bit about it, just briefly.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Mayor Protem Viegas said it perfectly. He covered most of the aspects. I serve alongside Mayor Protem Viegas on the Civic Center Authority. Most of the land is owned by the county. We own about 32% of the Civic Center. This building became available for sale sometime last year. The state invited several entities to tour the building. We looked at it. We identified several deficiencies in it. We wrote a letter in January to the state expressing interest in it. We feel at some point, you know, when we take into consideration all these deficiencies in the building, that, you know, this is a teardown, but not necessarily immediately. It can be used in the interim until the city decides what to do with it. And having control of a larger percentage of the Civic Center will allow the city to explore options such as public-private partnerships, maybe attract private funding to invest in, you know, a modern civic center that is fit for the city of Santa Ana. Every building has a life cycle, and at some point, we will be replacing City Hall and these chambers. And we may need a bigger council chambers, like you've seen in the last couple of months, how many people, you know, were sitting outside. They couldn't-- we could not fit them in here. But there are so many applications that we can look into and consider when doing a master plan for Civic Center. So I'll be glad to answer any questions, if you may have.
Anybody else, Councilor Solario?
A couple of questions. I know sometimes there are timelines for different types of possible buyers to make offers. What are the timelines that we're working with?
I believe the first step was the state to advertise or issue a notice that the building is available for sale. And I think within 90 days, anyone can express interest in it. They probably give priority to buyers who may have certain goals to accomplish, such as-
Government agencies.
Government agencies or housing.
And do you have a rough center today on purchase price?
Well, according to our recent conversations with the Department of General Services, they had an appraisal conducted on this building, but they have not disclosed what that value is. And they left it to every interested party to do their own appraisal and evaluate what it is. But based on our initial estimates, I mean, if we take into consideration the code upgrades, you know, elevators, means of egress, Title 24, ADA improvements, maybe seismic improvements, you know, we can maybe conclude that this is a building that needs to come down at some point, not necessarily immediately. Because currently, it's being used by, you know, several departments. So there are, you know, tenants in it at this time.
And I think Councilman Viegas makes a good point, that if and when we do need to move for seismic reasons, and I don't know the full details of timing for that, but, you know, we are at City Hall in an older structure, so I think there is some value to studying this and doing our old due diligence. But I do appreciate-
Yes. I think if council wishes, you know, staff can come back with a more detailed report and pursue, you know, with the support of Mayor Protem, you know, pursue the purchase of this, acquiring it, and also exploring what possibilities, you know, whether op zones or any rezoning that we can create for Civic Center.
Thank you very much. Go ahead, Councilor.
So for this building, okay, you're saying you're going to go check to see how much the value it is, right? What we're going to be getting the building for, the amount?
I think the next step is to hire a professional appraiser to appraise the building and submit it to the state, you know, expressing interest. Here's what we, you know, believe the value is, and here's our offer. The value could be zero. We don't know yet at this time, based on, as I said, all these upgrades, or, you know, like the cost of demolishing the building, you know, will be taken into consideration as well when such a report is prepared.
So how much would it cost to do all that? You'll be bringing that back to us to see how much the appraiser is, how much the building is, and where's that money coming from?
An appraisal will probably charge anywhere between, I would say, $7,000 and $15,000 to do a full appraisal on this. Once that's done, then we can-- we will be in a much better position to negotiate with the state and then come back to council with more specific recommendations.
Okay, so it's going to be coming back to us to see what we want, if we want to go with it or not. But right now, so what are we doing now?
So what I'm asking is my colleagues to support this item by directing the staff to look into the purchase of it. And it's also within an opportunity zone, which is a great, great opportunity for all of us, actually. If you can speak to my colleagues about that, just very briefly, about an opportunity zone, what that entails?
Definitely. Within Orange County, the IRS, the tax code provisions that were introduced in 2017 identified large portions of the city of Santa Ana and Fullerton as opportunity zones. Those are areas where a private investor can shelter their money through investing in those communities. And the way they do it, basically, you know, any capital gain realized from investments, whether stock market, real estate, or any other profit from any business, can be invested in those areas. And the tax that will be due on these amounts, or the capital gain, can be deferred five, seven, or 10 years. If the investment is kept in those areas for 10 years or more, then the entire capital gain will be dismissed or wiped out. And there are certain conditions that an investor has to meet. The property has to be in an opportunity zone. The value of the land has to be equal or less than the amount that will be invested in improving the property, which basically the purpose of this incentive, which is create jobs and invest in certain communities that we're underperforming in the last, you know, economic cycle. And then there are certain time limits that an investor has to meet. So if the longer we wait, you know, basically, we're going to miss out on such opportunities in attracting capital gain money and investing in Santa Ana, whether here, Willowick, or any other area within those zones.
So we need to move quickly, is what you're saying. And this is right here, right next door. Eventually, this City Hall needs to be torn down, and we need a new building. If you look across the street, the county already started. They're almost done with their first building. They're going to move on to the second phase of that side of the street. And then what about this side? I mean, if we-- we're going to have to do something. And this is a good opportunity with this building right next door. We can always-- that's going to have to be demolished also at some point. But we need to look into this. So need direction from my colleagues to- Make a motion. Want to make a motion for us to direct staff to pursue the purchase of the state building located at 605 Santa Ana Boulevard, right here in Santa Ana.
Mr. Mayor Protem, really quick, I just wanted to thank Mayor Protem Viegas for putting this on here as well, because it is in an opportunity zone. And, you know, and I was just, I've been throwing out ideas with various executives and the city manager about this potential site and how, you know, how we talk-- you just mentioned moving into that building while this building gets repurposed. But I just see a lot of opportunity to be able to move closer to the public view, you know, demolish that, build us a new building, maybe smaller in size, but with the bigger council chambers, because we see a lot of space that's unused currently in this building that we're in. You know, the newest council member here, I've walked into this building, I was just shocked at just seeing how old and worn down everything looks. We hold meetings here. We're meeting right now with, you know, with the car dealers in there. And I know it's embarrassing for our residents and people that we have meetings here to-- so thank you. This could be good for us and, you know, having a more efficient building and bring it into the 21st century, 20th century at least.
Make a motion. All right, let's do a motion, and then we'll probably take a little recess so they can wrap up what they're doing next door, and we'll come back. Motion's on the table. Okay, motion. Do we have a second? Those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Do we want to take on 85C right now, or maybe take a little break and then come right back?
It's a quick one?
It's a quick one?
Yeah.
All right, go ahead. Who wants to lead it?
They're working on that other item.
I know they are. So I was going to just take a-
So I, I was gonna just take a recess, people can go to the restroom, whatever, and then we'll come back. Let, let's do a little recess for a few minutes. All right, do we have an amended motion, or what, what do we have on the dealership issue?
I think staff and, and the dealers and their very able rep, Whittingham, came up with ways to, to address it on a ninety-day test period. So if our city attorney can read it out, and then the maker and second, or you can just adopt it as a friendly, and I'd be fine with it, or we could do a new one, but I think just maybe as a friendly, 'cause I think you'll like it.
It might be better to clarify, make a new motion. This motion would be to approve the program as presented to you this evening with a ninety-day test program, after which the staff would come back to the city council with a report. This program would require one of the following, in addition to registering the car in Santa Ana. One of the following would be a driver's license, a property tax bill, a utility bill, proof of insurance, Santa Ana business license, or a bank statement with the address here in Santa Ana.
All right, so what is the pleasure? Everybody's good with that? May I shouldn't ask that?
Second, do you have a second to that, or do you wanna take a motion in a second?
All right, let's take this as an amendment to the original.
Yeah.
Councilor Solario, second by Viejas.
Yeah, I was not the maker of it, but just whoever the-
The amendment.
Yes. So is Viejas, any questions?
All right.
They'll accept it as friendly.
You accept it. Go ahead.
So, okay, so you mentioned like six different things.
One of them, one of the following.
Oh, one of the following.
So in addition to registering the car in Santa Ana, it would be one of the following.
Oh, okay.
Any one of those items.
Okay, and it's for ninety days, and then it'll come back to the council and then-
For a report.
Yep. And there's a nice elegance to that. The car will be a Santa Ana car, you know, as, as well, and that's official that, you know, they're gonna claim Santa Ana.
All right, so with that, let's take a vote then on this. Those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Aye, those opposed, motion carries.
No. I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding.
They, they actually could believe it. It'll still pass four to one, right? But you need appropriation adjustment on that thing. Wanna take a break, and you go next door? No, I'm kidding. All right, so with that, you guys can go home. Go home before we change our mind. So with that, I now wanna go to item eighty-five C. And double your car sales.
So do you wanna take it? Since you're the chair, okay, so this is for something that I've been asking for since I've been here, and how, when we're gonna be addressing the budget, for us to be able to make, you know, recommendations and appropriations. I, I wanted to see the, the true picture of our financial health, per se. And I'm, I'm happy that at the edebet meeting that we had last, was it last Monday? You know, we were talking about issues, and I'm happy that all three of us that are on that committee agreed to bring it to council for all of us to see if we could have a special budget meeting before the end of the month, so we can start addressing issues, you know, that are gaps in, you know, where, where we need to be focusing on. So I'm happy that it's here, and I, I'm hoping that we can get it on the calendar, but, you know, it's gonna be up to all of us, but if we could have it before March thirtieth would be great. So that would be my ask, and that's all I have to say.
Any other thought? I know we had two other council members on this item.
I think the councilwoman spoke very well about it, but I'll just quickly add that, you know, by the end of March, or for sure by mid-April, and it's to get a sense of the fiscal health, as was mentioned, but I think it's important for the staff, because we have a lot of staff working on the budget, that they understand what type of priorities that we have, you know, how we wanna see general fund dollars spent, how we wanna see Measure X dollars spent. At our last edebet committee, we did talk about the spending requirements of Measure X, so in many ways, we, you know, have, we've begun that conversation finally, but we need to have that conversation as, as a council, and again, staff preparing their draft budget to us, and it'd be good for everybody, staff, council, and the community for that draft budget, to have some of our thoughts and intentions in it. So I think the main message here is just, and I think the staff is very willing and wanting to do this as well, but we want our colleagues to understand the urgency as well, and it could be a special meeting or just a substantial portion of a very light meeting, but the main point is, you know, it really needs to occur over the next, you know, two to six weeks, in my humble opinion.
Any other thoughts, Councilor Peñalosa?
No.
No other thoughts?
I agree with, I agree with both my, my colleagues.
Okay?
For, for me would be if we could have it sooner rather than later. And I know we had put in here for March 2019, that would be either next week or the following. For me, that would be the ask that I would make, the recommendation, if we could have it before March thirtieth.
So you wanna maybe go to council members and see what availability is, and include Councilmember Sarmiento?
The staff now has heard from three of us, if, you know, if Mayor Protem or Mayor can speak to your willingness, and then they can work with our calendars and make it happen.
I, I would suggest, since we're all, I didn't wanna cram more onto Friday, but since we're all gonna be here Friday, maybe, or is that too soon?
Yeah, yeah. They have to prepare, yeah, they have to.
Watch, you've already got from three, you know, go talk to the other three. We can do it tomorrow. Let's see what we can come up with, maybe sometime next week.
But you have an interest, though, in doing the budget workshop, I suppose?
I, I'd rather wait for the city manager to come on board, and I said, I mentioned that-
Yeah, but that may be May or something, and we gotta have a budget with, that has our ideas. That's the only issue with that.
I, again, I-
Well, you know, and, and if not, then-
So that's a yes?
If not, then I'll just put it as an eighty-five A item for the next regular meeting, and we'll do it as in, in that format, but it'd be better if it were-
He's okay with next week?
Is he?
One, one's okay, except Thursday.
Thursday, you have OCFA, I can't do it.
But you're willing to do it over the next, okay. So it sounds like there's four giving direction. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. We're just gonna hear and give input. So if there's four, then we'll poll each of you for preferred dates?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, but of the seven, so, I mean, the six, so we can schedule it, yeah. Exactly. Yeah. Excellent, thank you.
All right, so that's that. Next item. We're now gonna recess to a special meeting for the Housing Authority. I'd entertain a motion on items one through three.
Move, move them.
And we excuse Councilmember Vince Sarmiento, I believe.
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Item number four. This is time and place to approve a Housing Authority annual plan and adopt a resolution.
Second.
Well, I think it's a public hearing. Let me just say, is anybody that wishes to address this?
No, we have no speakers.
All right, so with that, we'll close the public hearing. We have, I believe, a motion and a second. Those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Aye, those opposed, motion carries.
Can we make clarification on the first and, and second for the public hearing item?
You did the second, right? Who did the first? I had somebody from that side.
I think I did, yeah, the first, okay.
Can you let her know? She's right next to you. All right. And now we're adjourning the special Housing Authority meeting, or reconvene the council meeting. City manager comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. To confirm, Supervisor Dell will be here April sixteenth at 5:45.
Oh, excellent, thank you.
Boy, hold on a second. She just gave me some speakers. Rosa Finnegan. Come on, if you wanna speak, come on down, followed by Romel Diaz Senior, followed by Sylvia Almansa, followed by Irma Macias, followed by Alonso Lugo. Please go ahead, just bring the mic down.
Is that okay?
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Rose Finnegan. I've been a resident of Santa Ana since 1960, seen a lot of changes and a lot of good. We have a problem with the ordinance that you drafted for us regarding the food trucks. We're inundated with them, literally, the center of Santa Ana. North don't have a problem, South doesn't have a problem, but come to the north, and they're 24 hours a day. I happen to live also on a permit, a parking street. They are able to park there 24 hours a day. One comes in at six, leaves at midnight, has lights flaring around. All of, four of your ordinance, they have broken. The police have come out. Sometimes they're cited, sometimes they aren't, because the police feel their hands are tied, because one was told they went to court and a judge gave them permission. I liked to see in that paper. But we really need help. We need to know who has the proper authority to have this problem corrected. Everybody's been passing the buck, and I've been working on this for over a year. I think I'm gonna be dead before this thing moves. I really do. I would like to know, because we're permit parking, what jurisdiction is that under? Is it under code enforcement? Because their hands are tied. Their police hands are tied, because nobody knows what to do. All we can do is complain, but we need help. We need answers so that we can, in our way, try to help you get this corrected. But it's not just my area, it's numerous areas, and we really need help. I know Santa Ana has its problems, but if we keep pushing this stuff aside, it's developing bigger.
Thank you.
Next.
If you could speak to the city manager right here, we'll take your name.
Is that a gentleman?
Yes, and we will, we will work on that for you.
Romel?
Ah, buenas noches. Este, el problema que voy a explicar yo aquí es, por ejemplo, está la, la lonchera por la Shelton y la Cabo, y está, está muy cerca, está muy cerca del, del estap, del tráfico de, de la Cubón. Entonces, como es muy larga la, la camioneta, se, se, se tiene que pasar uno del estap para, para adelante, para no tener un accidente, o no que, o que te pegue, ¿verdad? Y, y entonces, eso, eso está grave pa, pa todo mundo que anda manejando y todo, pa todos peatones y todo. Y otra cosa, la, la lonchera, los clientes que llegan ahí a la calle, se parquen enfrente de mi casa ahí. Entonces, cuando van y compran a la lonchera, cuando terminan de comer, avientan el papel, el plato, cosas, si comida le sobró, la avientan ahí a un lado y todo eso, y eso no, eso no está bien, no, no está correcto para, para mí, porque yo tengo que juntarla, ¿verdad? Y es, es trabajo extra. En, en, otra, otra cosa que quiero decir, hay, hay dos, dos loncheras, pero esas venden, venden tortillas, venden comida, venden todo. Entonces, hay clientes que llegan ahí, se paran en medio, ponen las direccionales, y entonces, cuando ponen direccionales, ellos están comprando allá abajo. Entonces, y ese es otro peligro, porque si tú, si viene otro carro de acá, tú tienes que esperar para que, para que pase el otro carro, o si no chocas ahí. Entonces, ese, ese, ese es mi sugerencia que tengo. Si toman, toman cartas en el asunto, a ver qué se puede hacer, ¿verdad? Porque este, pues yo ya, ya me cansé de, de juntar papeles y todo eso, ¿verdad? Muchas gracias. Muchas gracias.
Shelton y Cabo. Cabo Street.
Okay. Good evening, good evening. I'm here about this problem with the lunch trucks. Talking about the one in specific in Shelton and, in Cabo, and this, they're parking too close to the stop sign, and the truck is just too long, so the, the cars have to stop past the stop sign, and that's, that's very dangerous, that is not safe, and it's bad for, for all of, everybody, bad for the pedestrians and the rest of the cars and all that. And there's another lunch truck that's there, and it's bad for, the clients for the lunch truck are there parking in front of my, my car, my house, I'm sorry, and, and, and all hours right there, and after the clients eat, they throw the trash around, and that's not right, so I have to go out and pick up the trash that they, they leave, and there are other lunch trucks there, and sometimes there are two other ones that have, they're not only food, but other things that they sell there, tortillas and everything else, and the clients, the cars just double park, and they put their blinkers on, and it's very dangerous, you have to stop or pass around them, and it's very dangerous. So please do something about this. I'm tired of picking up the trash for everybody.
Muchas gracias.
I called the next several speakers, so just come on up.
Good evening. My name is Sylvia Almansa, and I just come to totally ask directly to the mayor, Polito, who is the one give the permit for all these vendors, trucks, and the city of Santa Ana? I've been fighting for this for more than a year, and it's, my neighborhood is being invaded for all these trucks. I live in the center of Santa Ana, and with less than three streets, we have more than ten vendors, including the taco truck that I have in the corner of my house, what happened to my living, my neighbor, and Coban and Shelton. She comes and parks from five o'clock in the afternoon to midnight. So I have a child, I cannot, sometimes I can't even sleep because the noise, and I would love to know, because I've been asking for more than a year, who's the one give the permits to this?
Well, let's answer it right now. Madam City Attorney, these trucks are basically permitted by state law. We've fought this for years. We don't give permits. The state says if it's a public street, like a car can park there, they can park there. I know it's a business, it's not a car, but believe me, cities around California have been fighting this. Can you speak to it, Madam City Attorney, just so she understands?
So, the lunch trucks, the trucks can park on any city street that they want to. They have a legal right to park there, and we can't stop them, unless, of course, we're posting no parking signs on all of our streets.
I do live in a permitted parking area, which is ridiculous that I can't even park in, in front of my house, because I do get a ticket, but no pending trucks. How that works?
If they are parked in a permitted parking area that is restricted by permit, then we would be able to cite those individuals if, that street, so whatever rules apply to everybody else, applies to them. Two-hour parking, it applies to the trucks. Permit parking, it applies to the trucks.
Well, it's not been working.
No parking, it applies to the trucks. So if that is occurring, if they're parking in a permitted parking area without a permit, then they would be subject to citation.
It has not been working like that, and I would like to say thank you very much for all the police department, they've been doing a very good job, but luckily for them, their hands are tied. Why? Because they can't even do anything, because the taco truck, example, the one I have in the corner of my house-
So the police department can cite those trucks?
They've been doing it.
If they, if they are parked in a permitted parking area and the trucks are, are there, they can be cited.
Sylvia, maybe meet with our city manager.
I would like to invite you to my house, and you can see what is the problem that we have in my neighborhood. I love my city, but this is a major problem.
And we wanna help you. Just talk to the city manager, and, 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 you know, he will follow up.
We will address it, we will follow up.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Who else wants to speak? Irma?
Evening, Honorable Counsel, ladies and gentlemen, whoever is left here. Thank you so much for allowing us to speak. This is, some of the residents that are up to the next- This is some of the residents that are up to the next with this food and vendor trucks. We've been arguing, council members, because Solorio did a walk with residents, including Joe Dunn, our former city manager, and they see the issues. Unfortunately, nothing has been addressed. Whatever they've been working on is going backwards. We are still stuck with these individuals. They are frightened residents, they are inviting more crime, safety, and we are here to help, to ask for your guidance and the help and support. Because people is tired, I'm tired. The people that comes to buy food from these vendor trucks, and food trucks, it's like, you don't know who comes to your neighborhood. You don't know. They're being assaulted, I mean, they're being, is crime around? That neighborhood is between Highland, Sheldon, Cavan, nothing but gangs. So you are exposing the residents and these individuals to come to this vendor trucks. They are violating so many, the codes they were implemented to them. They have the neon lights, they have the chairs, they have the tables, they double park, and these residents are tired. We are tired of this. Why? We don't have the same issues on the north and the south of Santa Ana, why the central part of Santa Ana? Supposedly it's because they buy from these trucks, but if you move them to a commercial, these are commercial vehicles in residential zones. I remember that these vehicles, commercial means they are in commercial zones, correct? So they are, they fall into the category of commercial. They were implemented for UPS trucks, for delivering trucks, not for parks, they are 24/7. We have the produce trucks parked 24/7 in areas that are overcrowded, there is no parking. People fighting for parking, you need to help to these residents. And help us, please, because I don't know what to do. I go to meetings, and these are the residents, they are asking me, I am nobody. So you need to understand that, it's on your hands, and do something. Thank you.
Thank you, Irma, I assume you're gonna attend that meeting with the city manager, yes?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers, my name is Alonso Lugo. I live at 1610 Marion Way, and I'm interested in applying for the Measure X Citizen Oversight Committee. I have no affiliation with anybody in the city or any of the council members here. I just have a pure interest in serving my community. A little bit about myself, I'm a lifelong resident of the city of Santa Ana. I've been a homeowner for the last 14 years. Been married the last 10 years, I'm a Marine Corps veteran. I have a commercial land use development background and construction background. I work for AT&amp;T and have a very technology and data-driven mindset. I'd like you to consider my application, but I did wanna make sure that I at very least introduce myself to you before you saw my application.
Thanks for coming down. Any questions?
Alonso Lugo.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Are you a candidate for Ward Four?
I am not.
I'm kidding you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, now I think we already did the city manager's comments, or we're done? Okay, any council comments, Councilor Solorio?
Thank you, I'm asking this young gentleman, please leave me his contact information, because you are impressive and the patience to be here through the meeting also says a lot, so I admire your effort. A few things, number one, I quickly do wanna address the food truck issue. I can't talk about it too much because it's not formally on the agenda. We did, I think, about a year and a half approve some rules. Most of the rules are being enforced, the issue is we don't have enough code enforcement staff. I can tell you from the number of complaints and tickets that we've done that there's enforcement going on, because we get complaints then from the trucks that don't like the enforcement. But we need more code enforcement staff for sure. And I would tell you, and I had another meeting today with some of our budget staff, but, you know, there's money in the budget under the strategic plan, there was $250,000 that they have for code enforcement staffing, the cannabis money from the adult, from the adult sales. A third of that revenue is supposed to go to code enforcement, and it's not happening, and that department is severely, severely understaffed. And hopefully with this budget and, you know, all the new staff that we have, we can begin to rectify that and do right by that. And next, we are looking at ways to do permit areas, so we can kinda control it a little bit more, but we do continue to ask for your patience, and work continues. Regarding parking, which came up today in many formats and will continue to, I know that Public Works is in the middle, or hopefully towards the end, of a pilot program to study parking constraints and lack of parking in certain parts of town. If maybe they via email can let the council know when we might receive a status report or when that might be complete. Similarly, with the scooter program, folks may remember, we approved that for a very limited time, just to study it, and if we can get timing on that, so we can communicate that with our community. And on the subject of reports, something that we've done in a few organizations where I've been in, we get a lot of reports on our agendas, some reports are more useful than others to the public, to the staff, to my colleagues. I'm very open to hearing about what reports really shouldn't be items that get put on the agenda, maybe just on a website, or annual, or maybe there might be some of these reports where they're monthly, and maybe you'd like to recommend that they're quarterly, because based on timing and other reasons, some of these reports are more valuable than others, and I'd like to hear about that. Finally, today, you know, my sisters, I have a great family, they reminded me, it's El Dia de San Jose, it's, you know, Saint Joseph's Day, and so happy Saint Joseph's Day to all my namesakes and tocayos out there, thank you.
All right, Councilor Davi, Peñalosa?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted, and again, because it's not agendized, I don't know how it would work, but I do understand where these residents are coming from in regards to the food truck stuff, so I'd like, personally like, because I wasn't here back when this was done, like Councilman Solorio, but I would like some kind of update on how this operates, because, you know, I've purchased items from these trucks, and they never take card payment, so it's cash only. So who knows if we're collecting even the appropriate revenue that we should be? And they're using our streets, you know, it's, so that's, those are my concerns, so I understand, and it is in Ward Two, so I'd be more than happy to come out whenever you'd like for me to see this. I see it daily, because I live in that neighborhood, off of Bristol and Edinger, so I have my fair share. And just wanted to, you know, state a couple things to the residents of Ward Four. I've been trying to go to as many Neighborhood Association meetings as I can in Ward Four, just to show the Ward Four that they're not, you know, during this, you know, cycle of change, they're not being ignored or neglected. I was elected at large, so I'm happy to be out there and represent that ward for as long as I can and make sure that those concerns aren't, don't go unnoticed and unheard. And we are listening, we are watching, you know, we were all elected at large up here, so please reach out with anything. I went to the Santa Ana Police Department's award ceremony a couple weeks ago, along with the mayor and Mayor Protem, and I was just happy to see that there, a lot of our officers getting recognized for saving lives, saving kids, saving cats and dogs, and, you know, a lot of inspiring stories that we don't hear from, you know, that we don't hear of and aren't publicized as much. To the younger recruits and police officers on the force, hang out with these individuals, hang out with these older police officers that are getting recognized for these lifesaving measures and carrying themselves with integrity, and, because, you know, you're gonna rub shoulders with them, you know, learn from them. And that's basically it. Thank you, staff, for all the help, and members that are still here, thank you, and good night.
Councilmember Iglesias?
So I just wanna report out that I had an opportunity to attend the SCAG board meeting on March 7th. And also, like, we shared, we met for the edebet meeting on March 11th. And then on the 13th, I was, also attended the Orange County Sanitation District Administration meeting. And last Friday, I attended the Santa Anita Neighborhood Association meeting. One thing that really took me back, like, years, literally, because it's just the state of that community center. It's very, it's very rundown, and it's a community center that needs to be, I think, brought to life in a way. And I know that we've already approved the resurfacing of the, or remodeling of the pools, right? So that should happen before the summer. But one, there were many concerns that the residents expressed, but one concern that really took me was the lighting in that park is very poor. And I know that we've put in some lights, but it seemed like we just stopped halfway. So I wanna know why the entire field wasn't, you know, lighted up? Because it's very dark on the side, I think would be like on the right-hand side, towards the back. And then also, the building itself is very dark, some of the light fixtures that are there are, some were broken. The bathroom is not health, I mean, I wouldn't go in there, I only went in there just to take pictures. But I wouldn't use it, and it's sad that our kids are put in that, you know, in that environment to use those restrooms, they're very, in very, very bad condition. And so I'm hoping that we give some relief to that, to that neighborhood, because it's so needed. So if you could look into the lighting of that building, because I know there's a lot of homeless that camp out around that area, and, you know, it always takes like a, I would say like a, not catastrophe, but, you know, something bad to happen in order for us to pay attention. So right now, I believe we should, you know, be in front of the issue, and if you could meet with, what's Felipe? I believe he's the Neighborhood Association president, and if you could see what we can do, because it's very dark in there, and it's, I know, it's something, I'm afraid that something's gonna happen, and then we're gonna be liable for something even bigger than the amount of money that we can be investing in there. So I know Lisa, you'll look into that, and I believe that they want you out there too, so you might be getting an email that they want you to attend their meeting. And I also wanna talk about Centennial, I know we talked about Centennial, the Education Center, last meeting, but I know that we talked about creating like an ad hoc committee, or something that we can meet, so we can start talking about their, talking about their MOU, because I wanna see what return on our investment for that, for that location. Because right now, it seems like we're not getting much, other than like $36,000 a year for that location, so I wanna see if we can revisit the MOU and part of that committee, so I'm looking to you. Is that Madam Attorney?
But I believe you and Councilor Solorio might be the, at least the two volunteers initially for that ad hoc.
Okay.
May we get a third member, maybe after Friday, let's see where we're at?
Because I want, yeah, I want one for us to start talking about, because Centennial has a lot of issues, and I know we've already addressed them.
The sooner the better.
Yes. Because of the Orange County Sanitation.
Find a, find a third member.
Who, what? So I want a third member from up here, because I wanna start talking about Centennial, because we truly definitely needed. So who would be?
This is for the Education Center ad hoc?
Ad hoc, yeah, and then also talk about Centennial.
All right, you got a certain member.
Thank you.
Peer pressure, man, they're coming from both sides.
There you go, and then I just wanna thank everyone for your patience, I know that, you know, I'm still in the learning curve, I know in six months, I'll be, I'll be asking more things, but I just wanna thank again Stephen, our assistant, no, your interim city attorney. And thank you, thank you for all of your help. And I just wanna thank everyone for being here, I know it's late, and thank you for staying, and with that said.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, any comments?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just wanna thank the Fire Department Chief Henry and our Police Department Chief Valentine. Last Friday, on the 15th, about 5:00 AM, there was a fire on North Ross Street, right by Willard Elementary, and there was six cars on fire. Fire Department responded, they aggressively, you know, attacked the fire, and they were able to contain it. The Police Department did a great job showing up and evacuating a two-story building and a five-story building there as the Fire Department continued to fight the car fires, there was six cars on fire, I couldn't believe it. And they were able to contain it, and the apartments didn't go up in flames. Santa Ana PD went out, evacuated all the buildings, they were able to help everyone across the street into Willard. I wanna thank also the Santa Ana Police Department, or the Santa Ana School Police, because they were, they responded also and opened up the gym, so these people wouldn't be sitting outside in the cold. And, you know, gave them a place to stay until they got the all clear. So I just wanna thank everyone for that, responding to that incident, very unfortunate what happened. They also found, I guess in the search, they found a gun and a purse on the roof or something. And go figure, you never know what you're gonna find, and it's still under investigation. But thank you to both the Santa Ana Police Department and the Orange County Fire Authority, and that is all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, and with that, I'm just gonna remind us all, we have that meeting on Friday, so let's be ready for that. And this meeting's gone long enough, so we're gonna adjourn for now, and we'll continue on Friday. Thank you, bye.